Councilmember Bridigum. Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen Penyalosa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tran.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to do the invocation and followed by Councilmember John O'Neal to lead us in the pledge.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we come together this evening, let us take a moment to reflect on the important work we do for our community. May we be inspired by a spirit of collaboration and understanding. Guide us as we seek to build a brighter future together. Help us create a community where every voice is heard and respected. And may we move forward with purpose and unity dedicated to the well-being of all those we serve. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. If you join me, if you remove your caps, if you're wearing a cap, please join me in pledging our allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty, thank you. We will adjourn over to the Housing Authority, so I'll hand it over to Chair Bridigum.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Dovin.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Here.
And Vice Chair Bridigum.
Here.
And Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Here.
Alright, we'll keep, I guess we'll...
Wait, am I chair or are you chair?
That's what I was trying to figure out. It was like...
Oh.
It says, it says I'm chair on here, but... We switched it then. I go, did something happen that I'm not aware of? Why don't you take over, Madam Chair?
We have two items under consent to entertain a motion. Please call roll. Call up.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Dovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bridigum.
Yes.
And Chair Nguyen Penyalosa.
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Are there any matters from Commissioners? Seeing none, oh, seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 22nd at 5:30 PM.
It's all good.
See you later.
Alright.
Thank you. Watch your step. Alrighty, we will reconvene City Council and go to presentations. Item one.
This evening for presentations, item number one, we have the legislative update from District 36, California State Senator Janet Nguyen is here to provide that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I always wonder why this is so low. It is a pleasure for me to be here in front of you and to provide legislative update. I want to first thank Mayor Jones, Councilmembers and staff for allowing me to speak here tonight. As your Senator, I am proud to call myself a daughter of Garden Grove. Having spent my former years here and been an alum of the Garden Grove High School, Go Argo, I am honored to serve as my hometown's voice in the State Senate and fight for initiative that help build a better, brighter and stronger community. As you know, I represent you in the 36th Senate District. My district, I represent approximately 1.1 million people. It goes from three cities in Los Angeles County, Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens and Cerritos. And then when we head into Orange County, I represent the majority of the cities in Orange County is in my Senate District. So you start, we start at Brenna Park, half of Brenna Park, La Palma, Cypress, Los Alamos, Stanton, 90% of Garden Grove, Westminster, Midway City, Fountain Valley and also Rossmore. And then we have the entire coast, the 41 miles of the coast of Orange County, which has, it starts in Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Dana Point, Capistrano Beach and also San Clemente. This year alone, both houses introduced approximately, actually, we introduced collectively 2,149 bills. And of that, about 1,000 of those bills have been, are actually on the Governor's desk. The Governor has till September 30th to sign, veto or do nothing with the bill. If he does nothing with the bill, it becomes law without his signature. However, in the eight years I've been up in Sacramento, I don't remember that happening. The Governor has also called for a special session in regards to the gas price and the gas, and the oil crisis that's happening in California. The Governor has every right to call for a special session, but the Speaker and the Pro Tem are the one who has to schedule the hearings. As of today, the Assembly, the Speaker has already scheduled hearings and Assembly members have already gone up to Sacramento last couple of weeks. The Senate side, there has not been a meeting scheduled, but we are hearing rumors that that will be occurring in the next couple of weeks or so. I most likely will be the one heading up to Sacramento because I do sit on nine standing committee. I'm sure one of my committee will be part of those hearings. Yes, unless you want to stay here with me to 5:30 in the morning, we can talk all about the 2,000 bills. I don't think you want to do that like Westminster, so I'll spare you and myself. And so I'm just going to give you a kind of little highlight on some of the issues that I feel that's very important. Let's start with crime. As you know, that with Prop 47 passed 10 years ago has really made it so that crime is now, there's no consequence when you commit a crime. I want to thank your chief and your police department for joining me last year in the city of Seal Beach and when we had a press conference in regards to fentanyl and trying to make sure that we hold drug dealers accountable. In regards to the crime and this, the robberies all across my district, you name it, from Cerritos Mall to Westminster Mall, to Asian Mall, Belatera, Fashion Island, you know, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, all my malls have been robbed, if not once, if not twice, numerous times in the last decade. And so the Governor has, we as bipartisan have voted on and supported, the Governor has signed a lot of the retail theft bills, but I wanted just to touch on the difference between the retail theft bill and also the Prop 36. I'm not here to campaign on behalf of Prop 36, but I want to make sure that people understand the difference because the Governor has come out to say, well, we have the retail theft bill, we don't need Prop 36. It is not true. They're both very, very different in the issues areas that they deal with. For instance, some of the things Prop 36 deals with is, one, it adds fentanyl to the list of drugs for which it is a felony if you possess any amount while possessing a firearm. Second, it requires a judge to warrant defendants charged with dealing with hard drugs that if they, that they could be charged with murder if their customer dies. Second is, it also allows prosecutors now combine multiple misdemeanor thefts committed in a recent time span or location into a felony. As you know, Prop 47 has allowed people to go and, as long as you go to the store and you steal less than $950, it's a misdemeanor. With Prop 36, it's now going to change that. If it's within a span of time or a specific location hit numerous times, you will now be charged with a felony. We need to hold these individuals accountable. As most of you know, I have two young boys, 11 years and 13 years old. They love going to the mall, they love going to movie theater. It's time for us to making sure that we as parents shouldn't have to worry that they're at the mall and if something could happen to them. We need to, we need to hold these criminals accountable and we need to making sure that our families are safe. That's the first issue. The second issue I want to touch on is fentanyl. I want to thank a lot of you, Mayor, Councilmembers Cindy Tran, Mayor Pro Tem Cindy Tran, Councilmember Stephanie Koffstein, O'Neal and also Bridigum for joining me last year in our fentanyl or town halls across the city of Garden Grove. Fentanyl, as you know, is an epidemic. It is the number one death killer of young adults between the ages of 18 and 45. We are literally watching a whole generation vanish before our eyes. It's now creeping down under 18 years old as well, five years old, six years old, 10 years old, 13 years old are all dying. By the end of this year, 6,000 Californians will die of fentanyl overdose. It is time for us not only to put in legislation and law to put these drug dealers away, but also we need to educate parents and we need to educate children as well. My children, as of two years ago, are not on Snapchat anymore. That's a parental right that I made because that's where a lot of our children are getting these fentanyl, is through Snapchat. And these children and young adults who are dying never have done drug in their life. Perfect children, kids who are going to MIT, bound for Harvard, Berkeley, you name it. But they fell in because they had sports injury and they needed pain medicine and they ran out. They had anxiety and they need pain medicine. I'm asking folks, I've been at the forefront of fighting the fentanyl across the state of California. I ask parents every time I see them, someone in this room would know someone personally in the next couple of years that have died of fentanyl. That's how creepy it is and how it's creeping so close to us that most of us don't even realize it. And so I ask you to talk to your young adults, talk to your children or folks that you know within those age group because it's time for us to have those conversations. The good news is that lots of bipartisan effort in fentanyl. I tried three years for a bill in Sacramento. Last year it was signed and, signed into law. If you possess this fentanyl with the intent to sell, we will put you away for an extra up to 25 years. It finally passed after three years and signed by the Governor. In other words, if you're a drug dealer dealing with fentanyl, we will put you away up to three, up to 25 more years. But not only are we going after the drug dealers, we need to educate and making sure the facilities in the public arena are safe. Concert Hall, Stadium are all now required to have some type of medication for an overdose crisis. Teachers, school, public, public facilities also required. So we are, you know, teachers, administrators are also now being trained or will be and that information on opiate and overdoses information are now on the websites of the school district. So lots of bipartisan effort, like I said, there needs to be several approach to fighting the fentanyl. That is, so, and then the next issue I want to touch base on is homelessness. Governor has already called on all state agency to remove all encampments in, on state land. Of course, the Governor cannot ask the local government to do so, but he, I mean, he cannot mandate you to do so, but he can ask you to do so, but if you don't do so, you are potentially losing state funding. There is Prop 1 funding and so the Governor's asking that after the US Supreme Court ruling a few, couple of months ago that all homeless encampments are given at least two days notice and if not, also to hold their belongings for up to 60 days. But we're asked, he's asking everybody across the state to start removing these encampment for safety of the residents. You also might know that in the last five years, the state of California has spent over $24 billion in homelessness for counties and cities. Orange County alone has been given $2 billion a year. But yet, Orange County has had 28% homelessness increase last year. There are some cities like you who have decreased homeless population in the double digit. Congratulations, I thank you for that on behalf of the residents. And there are cities who hasn't been successful. Two issue, two areas that we need to do. One is we need to audit. We need to audit programs that work, let's put more money into it. And programs that's not working, it's time to get rid of them. It's time to say enough is enough, let's look at what the taxpayer have asked us to do and let's move on and making sure that the programs work, let's double them, triple those programs. And the second part though, is that if you look at my entire district, those who are homeless in the city of San Clemente is very different than the city of Artesia, than Newport Beach, Stanton, Garden Grove, Seal Beach, La Palma, you name it. Individuals who are homeless in these, in these cities, individual cities are very different, different circumstances. It's time for the county to give the money back to the city and you put a plan together to tell the county how you are going to implement a homeless program in your city. It's not for the county's place to tell you, the city, what to do. It's no different that I advocate for the state to not tell what the county to do, but if you're not spending the money right, we're going to take the money back. And that's what the county should be doing, is giving the money back because maybe Garden Grove might need two more police officers or a wraparound program or affordable housing, a rehab center. Whatever it is that you need, you should have that plan, bring it to the county and then tell the county to release that money to you. If they're not being able to help and if the homeless crisis continue to increase, then we need to then look at why it's that, why that's the case. Because right now, it is not compassionate of us at all to leave these individuals out there. There are people in Orange County dying every month. So we can't sit here and think that that's compassionate of us to allow them to be out there and not get helped. And then the, then the last issue is, I, oh, two more issues. Cost of living, I continue to fight with the Governor and the super majority party is to making sure that we lower the gas, of gas, of, lower the sales tax of gas. California pays the highest gas price per gallon in the nation, even beating Hawaii when Hawaii imports everything. That's just crazy. And so we need to look at our gas price increase. Every year, it needs to be frozen and/or the money needs to be given back to the taxpayer because we all rely on our cars to go to work, take our kids to school, doctor's office, grocery store, you name it. Last issue I wanted to touch on is animals. It's one of my proudest achievement is fighting for the animals in our animal shelter because they don't have a voice and we need to be their voice. Pre-COVID, the County of Orange Shelter allows people just to go into the shelter. If they feel like it, love the dog or the cat, they can adopt it. During COVID, the county shut down and you can only make an appointment after you look at their pictures online. After COVID, four years later, we're still the same, it's still shut down. So last year, at the end of last year, I did an op-ed in the OC Register calling out the County of Orange. It's time for them to open the facility up. And they finally, now as of today, it is finally fully open to the residents of Orange County. Orange County had 180% euthanization rate, but no one can explain why. Other things that I've done in regards to the county is that we did many legislation. One of it was passed and signed by the Governor. It is now to require that every county facility, animal shelters across the state of California will now be required to have a medical record on any animal that comes in. There was a husky that went into the Orange County Shelter, hit by a car, bleeding to death internally, excruciating pain internally, died three days later and no one can show us where the medical record. Was the dog seen by anybody? We don't know. Was the dog giving any medication? Nothing. A cat goes in, half a limb missing, blood gushing out, no medical record. Now the county facilities across the state is required to have a medical record of intake, assessment, if it's provided any treatment and then if, and then a reason if it needs to be euthanized. That needs to be provided now. You would think that would be done today because if you went to the ER, you want that information for you so the next doctor can see you and know what you were given earlier in the day. So those are some of the things that I've been working on your behalf. It is truly an honor as always to represent you in the State Senate. I've represented Garden Grove since 2004 and so it's been, it's my hometown where I grew up and so it's always nice to be able to come back home. My district office is in Huntington Beach. The reason for it's in Huntington Beach is because from Huntington Beach to Artesia, it's about 45 minutes without traffic and from Huntington Beach to San Clemente is about an hour without traffic. Yes, I don't think there isn't any time that was without traffic, but I thought it'd be nice to talk about it without traffic. But if, if you have any questions or if you don't have it tonight, if you think about it later, if any residents who's watching this or listening to this is that, feel free to reach out to my office. You have any questions in terms of state agency or any bills that you would like a status of, let us know. We will respond to giving status of all the bills after September 30th because we don't have a tracker that tells us when the Governor signs what bills and, you know, we just, we get it like the public. We get the press release. If it, if he's going to sign or veto one of my bill, his staff usually gives my office a courtesy call about 20 to 30 minutes before it's publicly released that he either signed or vetoed my bill. So we do have a few bills left on the Governor's desk. And my, so my district office is 301 Main Street, Suite 212 in Huntington Beach. And my office phone number is 714-374-4000, 714-374-4000. And again, thank you for your time and thank you for giving me the opportunity to always be able to do a legislative update.
Thank you, Senator. Alright, item number two.
This evening, item number two is a community spotlight in recognition of the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools for receiving the CABE 2024 Courage to Act Award for the promotion of bilingual and bicultural education and social justice. And Assistant City Manager Matt West will provide that community spotlight.
Thank you. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools for receiving the California Association for Bilingual Education, CABE 2024 Courage to Act Award. Would the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools directors joining us tonight, please come forward. The Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools is a nonprofit organization that fosters cultural enrichment and educational advancement by collaborating with schools, districts, city councils and nonprofit entities. For 35 years, the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools has tirelessly provided language support, cultural activities and academic contests for the Vietnamese community. The headquarters for the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools is located in Garden Grove, but the organization has played a pivotal role in groundbreaking initiatives across the nation, including the establishment of the first K through six Vietnamese dual language immersion program in California and the first Vietnamese high school dual language immersion program in the country. Earlier this year, the California Association for Bilingual Education hosted the CABE 2024 Annual Conference and presented the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools with the CABE 2024 Courage to Act Award for the promotion of bilingual, bicultural education and social justice. The Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools has remained dedicated to promoting biliteracy, multicultural competence and educational equity since its formation in 1988 and hopes to establish Vietnamese dual language immersion programs in various states and countries. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools with a certificate and memento of recognition for receiving the 2024 Courage to Act Award. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we could have the teacher too. We have some of the teacher and the board come up, yes.
The teacher?
Yes, the board come up, yes, yes.
So can we have, can we have the Vietnamese teachers stand behind us? And Mr. George Vu, he is the president, he will speak in Vietnamese and I, Yu Quang Nguyen, I will translate into English.
Kính chào tất cả quý vị, kính chào ông thị trưởng. Chúc tôi rất vui mừng khi được thành phố Garden Grove có nhà ý để mà tặng cho chúng tôi một món quà kỷ niệm để chúng tôi đã làm việc thì hơn 35 năm qua. Chúc tôi hân hạnh và được nhận được cái bằng tưởng niệm của tất cả quý vị. Và chúc đồng cũng biết ông thị trưởng và tất cả quý vị ở trong hội đồng quản trị, trong hội đồng của thành phố Garden Grove. Và đặc biệt một người chúng tôi xin cảm ơn không ai khác hơn là Cindy Tran. Tôi biết Cindy Tran từ lúc cô ta còn là một học sinh trung học. Cô đã đến giúp chúng tôi trong những công việc mà chúng tôi làm hàng năm, hàng ngày. Và từ có một cô học sinh trở thành một cô giáo, trở thành một hiệu trưởng và bây giờ cô đã trở thành là major pro tem của thành phố Garden Grove. Đây là học sinh, tôi muốn khuyến khích tất cả những các bạn học sinh trẻ cũng nhìn gương của cô Cindy để mà chúng ta cùng bước vào dòng chính cũng giống như là Cindy hiện nay. Chúng tôi muốn dành cái phần thưởng đặc biệt này để cho tất cả các thành viên của trong hội đồng quản trị của chúng tôi. Và đặc biệt là những thầy cô giáo đã giúp chúng tôi nhiều năm qua những chương trình tu nghiệp sư phàm, rồi hội chợ Tết, rồi đi thi cho các em, rồi soạn những cái bồ sách giáo khoa để mà chúng tôi có được một cái bồ sách giáo khoa để cho các học hu, hiện giờ như là học khu Garden Grove, hiện giờ cũng đang sử dụng cái bồ sách giáo khoa của chúng tôi. Đó là những cái lời mà chúng tôi xin chân thành cảm ơn tất cả quý vị hôm nay. Giờ vậy, và sau đây xin mời cô Du Quyên sẽ nói về vài lời bằng Anh ngữ.
Well, I would like to translate as much as I can from what he just said. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We feel such a depth gratitude working and knowing we are being acknowledged and rewarded. And we are humble and honored to accept this award. We especially are thankful to the Mayor and the council members of the Garden Grove City and especially Cindy Tran. Yeah, she's also the member of TAVID about 10 years ago, huh? And she's still now working with us. Thank you so much. And we would like to dedicate this award to all the members of the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools and all the teachers who support us constantly for many, many years while we embrace the missions of preserving our Vietnamese language and culture overseas. Once again, thank you so much. Thank you so a lot. Thank you.
I don't, nobody get to do this and I appreciate it, Mayor.
No problem.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you because the Union of Overseas Vietnamese Language Schools helps a lot of young generation to learn Vietnamese and to learn the culture of the Vietnamese people. And they've been doing it for over 35 years. And, you know, I've been a big fan and big supporter throughout the years and have attended many of these, or their activities. What's actually impressive, a lot of these young students can speak Vietnamese way better than I can. And so, you know, that's where we get very jealous. But again, I just want to say thank you, everybody here and all the teachers for all that you do because having, learning that second... Because having, learning that second language or knowing that second language, especially that's from their parents, it's much more valuable and it really helps, especially we need more bilingual individuals who can speak multiple languages fluently in Orange County. So thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number three, which is a Community Development Block Grant Program Award recognizing the city of Garden Grove for outstanding collaboration.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the city council. This evening, I am pleased to announce that the city has won this award that was just mentioned. And I would like to call up Chief Alfarah, Sergeant Brown. I would like to, from our PD department, that has been very much a part of this collaboration. I would also like to call up Tam Nguyen, Steve Neshanian, and Haley Wilhelm from Be Well. Please come up, please come up. And I'd also, last but not least, like to call up our neighborhood services team led by Monica Corver Rubius, Tim Throne, and Dana Yang. I'm going to say a few words, the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, is a federal program administered by the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department. CDBG is a federally funded program and it reinvests tax dollars back into under-resourced communities. Garden Grove is a direct entitlement city that this last year received one point eight million dollars in CDBG funds. There are over a hundred entitlement cities in Southern California. So this year, CDBG is celebrating its fiftieth year as a program. And so they asked cities to nominate a particular program, any program within the past fifty years. So with over a hundred participants, fifty years, that's over five hundred potential nominations. And only seven awards were given and Garden Grove was one of them. And yes, it is very, very proud. This particular award was this strong collaboration between our police department and specifically the special resources team and also Be Well with the program that they implement here in Garden Grove on mental health and with our neighborhood services program. We heard a lot tonight earlier about fentanyl, drug use, mental health, and homelessness. And it was coincidental that this particular program addresses all of those particular issues within our community. And this collaboration has, is just one part of an ecosystem that Garden Grove has invested in to address homelessness and related social issues. So Garden Grove was the only city in Orange County to have a decrease in our point in time count this past year. And I'm confident that it was the leadership of this council and the support that you've given to these programs that led to these results and this award. So thank you all and please join me in acknowledging the team.
Wait what? Right now? Okay.
I guess it just went out the door. So I'll make it quick, so. Just present to see the Garden Grove in honor of your leadership, commitment, and outstanding contribution to provide essential service to our most vulnerable resident, Community Development Block Grant Program Award. So presenting to who be the person will accept this? Let's go over the group, please, come in, come in the group.
Thank you.
You guys come in, you guys deserve it, okay?
Thank you so much.
You'll be in the center, okay?
All right, before we go to oral communications, I want to take a couple items out of order. So I'd like to pull consent items number five and six and make a motion to approve, if I may.
A second.
Okay, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item five was adoption of a proclamation recognizing the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. May I call David Dent and Rafael Avila with Community Development to come receive a framed proclamation? Are they around? Okay.
You're gonna read it first?
All right, I'm gonna read the proclamation real quick. Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas code enforcement officers provide for the welfare of residents throughout the city of Garden Grove by enforcing local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of property maintenance, building, zoning, housing, health, and safety. And whereas code enforcement officers have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job they do to improve our community, living conditions for residents and businesses. Whereas these code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals whose goals are preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, promoting safety and well-being, and preserving property values through collaboration, knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, building, property maintenance laws. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Garden Grove and regularly interact with the public and variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers. And whereas the city of Garden Grove recognizes code enforcement officers for their dedication and service to our community. Now, therefore, the city of Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the second week of October and annually hereafter Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Garden Grove. Congratulations.
So by default, my manager made me make, give this speech, so I'll make it quick. My name is Rafael Avila, I'm the supervisor with code enforcement. I've been a part of this fantastic city for about nine months now, but it feels like about three years. And it feels like three years because we're doing a lot of work and we're actively engaging in the city. We really do appreciate this. Oftentimes, we hear more curse words than thank yous in code enforcement. So honestly, this is a great symbol of showing that the community does care about us. I've been in code enforcement for about ten years. I've met a lot of code officers and I can honestly say here in Garden Grove, we have a really dedicated staff that truly do care about this community. So with that, thank you very much.
I'll just time in for a little bit, but yes, Rafael has been our supervisor for the last nine months. And again, just being with the city for the past seven years, it's been an awesome and amazing time to see the change and see how code enforcement has really stuck its roots in the city and making it a better place for everybody. But thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and item number six that we already acted upon is an adoption of a proclamation recognizing October twenty twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. May I call Martha Figaro at Thomas House to come forward? And I'll ask Assistant City Manager Matt West to read the proclamation.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-four. Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries and affects women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief. Whereas domestic violence weakens the foundation of our community and impacts the lives of families and future generations. Whereas stopping the cycle of violence requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. Whereas domestic violence programs in California provide essential life-saving services for survivors, their children, and communities. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. And whereas during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to working together to end domestic violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge the residents of our community to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Thank you. On behalf of Thomas House, our CEO, our Board of Directors, our staff, and our families that have came and will come, I thank everybody, thank you.
All right, that now takes us on to oral communications. We do have a number of cards, so we'll keep comments to three minutes tops, they'll be timed. Starting with Andy Krueger.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andy Krueger. I'm a homeowner and a business owner in the third district. I come before you to talk about what the senator was talking about, fentanyl and homelessness crisis that we have in regards to not just the, a lot of things that you guys are dealing with in regards to the housing them and getting them off the streets and the police and stuff, but the actual health and safety parts of it. I own an organization that does the cleanup for hazardous materials. Recently, I was walking around my neighborhood cleaning up some stuff, just, just to clean up. And I found a piece of fentanyl paraphernalia that was on the street. And it was still, there was still stuff in it. And if a child or if an animal were to have come across that and ingested it in some way, it clearly would have died. And I'm just here to offer my support for what you guys are doing. I think it's great, I think the governor, I think the county, I think all levels, you guys are on it, like paying attention to it. But the health and safety part of it, I'm concerned about because I don't know that you guys have somewhat organization within that knows how to identify how dangerous certain things are. And then even if you did, how to properly clean them, the chemicals that are required, the testing that's required. And I'm just simply here to offer my expertise and my organization to the community if you guys are so inclined to need it.
Thank you, thank you. Gonzalo, carry on.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gonzalo. I live here in Garden Grove, I own a property. I've been having a case with the code enforcement department for the last five years. There's a business behind my property and they bringing trash, a lot of contamination to the neighborhood. And there's nothing that the code enforcement can be done at this point. They say that the business, it has permit from the city of Garden Grove and they cannot proceed with any other actions. I've been calling the air quality department, they've been citing them. And I've been calling the health department, they've been citing them. But that's all they can do at this point because they say cannot do anything more because the city of Garden Grove allow this company to do their business there. What they do is bringing trash from everywhere. They're contaminated. They're bringing chemicals. And it's all in there and it's right behind my property. It's like living in a war zone, it's pretty nasty. And for the last five years, I've been complaining with the code enforcement, but nothing has been done. Three weeks ago, I spoke with the supervisor of the code enforcement. He told me that he referred the case to the, to the, to the board. And so I'm here just to see if I can request the city of Garden Grove to to cancel the permit from these people to stop doing that type of business. I have several videos, code enforcement department, they had the videos. And just wondering if the city of Garden Grove can stop the permit so these people can stop operating behind our properties.
Thank you. I have your information, I'll make sure we look into it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Lariqia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Joel Lariqia. I am a Garden Grove Planning Commissioner. I'm a volunteer code enforcement officer. And I'm a board member of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. So I'm very invested in Garden Grove. But tonight, I'm here as a thirty-eight-year resident of Garden Grove. First, I'd like to say to the mayor, excuse me, a little sore throat. And to the council members that are leaving, you guys have been fantastic. You, we really appreciate everything you guys have done for our city. I think you, we couldn't, you are leaving us in a great situation and I appreciate everything you guys have done. Now, the other thing I want to talk about really quick is the upcoming election. And my plea is with the people that are staying on the council and the new members that are coming in. I know it's a battle with the state, but I would love to see if we can get rid of this district voting. And the reason I'm saying this is because I don't, I don't vote by party lines. I don't care what party you are, I don't care what nationality you are, what race you are, what gender. If I like what you do, I'm gonna vote for you. But with district voting, I can't do that. So say like in my district, if we have two or three people that are running for council and I don't feel any of them are a fit, I'm screwed, I don't get to vote. But now, there might be somebody in another But now, there might be somebody in another district that I think would be a great fit for the city. I can't do anything about it. So I feel that we should be able to vote for one to two people. If there's eight or 10 people running, you can check a box for one or two. That's it. And then if there's three positions open, the top three vote-getters, they're our city council. And then you guys decide who's going to represent what district. And the reason I say that, and I'm sorry, but there's a lot of lying that's going on in our city. People start lying to get their kids into elementary school, they lie to get them into high school, and I know they're lying about where they live to get into politics. And I'm not accusing anybody up here of doing that, but it's there. So what I'd like to see is if we can get rid of, I know it's a tough call because it's state mandated, but if there's anything we can do to get against it, I'd appreciate it. Because I know, in my opinion, the state is not, the legislators aren't helping our small cities. They're doing more damage to us, I think, than they are good. So I know it's kind of going to go on deaf ears up north, but if we could get away from it, I would really appreciate it. And again, council and Mr. Mayor, thank you for what you guys did. I think you guys did fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Eric Wallace.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Wanted to come to speak briefly in regards to a situation. I am California-born, Garden Grove, actually. Mr. O'Neal's come out several times, talked to my father. We've lived in the house on Varna and Orangewood for 63 years. And we've constantly had a problem with the park across the street in regards to parking. People come on the weekends with these leagues, they disrespect the neighbors, they throw down their garbage, they move our cans on Sundays when we put them out. I go to work early on Mondays, I put the cans out. They move them, put them up on our grass, don't put them back, park in front of the driveways. I mean, it's really getting trashy there. And there's, I've called several times, I've talked to the police. Police officers have been great, they've come out. Or they've talked to me over the phone, and they say they can't enforce anything. There's actually a sign up on our neighborhood that says residential parking only. It was placed there by the City of Garden Grove decades and decades ago, and they will not enforce because they don't have a way to do that. And we're looking for some assistance and some help. It's gotten much worse in the last few years with just the disrespect and the throwing down the garbage, everything else. There's been confrontations with the homeowners from these people that come from outside of the city for these games. And there is one gentleman, I don't know if he works with the leagues or not, but he shows up late. The parking lot is locked most of the time, so when they get there at 7:00, 6:30, 7:00 AM in the morning, you know, they park wherever they want and cause problems. And so we're asking for some help. I don't know if it's a change in the enforcement, or maybe putting somebody out there for parking enforcement, or... They do illegal U-turns, so when you go to pull out, they pull up, pick up their kids, and then they don't even signal, they do a quick U-turn, and they've just about hit several of the residents doing that because they're not signaling. They stop, stop sign, go to pull out, and they're like, oops, whoops, sorry, sorry. Well, someone's going to get shot or hit. Not hit, shot, but hit. And it's going to be a disaster at that time. So I'm asking, you know, just some consideration, maybe we can do something about that in the future. As well as the pine trees on Orangewood there, they've uprooted the sidewalk. And I know that Garden Grove's been taking them out or fixing the sidewalks, but they're actually destroying the brick wall along there for the residents who own that. And so I'm asking maybe someone can contact me, reach out, and maybe we can work on either getting them removed, like the other trees have been removed, or cut way down. Because the sidewalks are uprooted, it's breaking the wall. The wall's expensive to replace. I don't know who's going to be responsible for that. I'm sure the homeowner's going to be partially, even though they're not our trees. So we would definitely appreciate some help on that as well. And I'm speaking for numerous families in the neighborhood, so if you want to reach out, I'd be more than happy to introduce you to those families. Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. I really appreciate the time you spent coming out several times. And that's all I have for tonight. So thank you for your time and consideration. Hopefully, I'll hear from you soon.
Thank you. Gregory, but I can't read the last name. Gregory P.
Prinsler.
Prinsler.
Aloha, ahi, ahi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am a very long, long time resident of Garden Grove since 1959. So for you young people behind me, yes, that makes me older than dirt. For the honorable councilwoman who saluted Garden Grove High, go Matadors. Okay, got to get my name. I'm going to piggyback off what Eric Wallace said. I live on Varna Street. Outside, we're referring to the baseball field at Lake School. We don't know who owns it, whether it's a school district or the city. We have tried to contact the president of the league to let him know of our problems, but because they have voting and switching officers every year, we don't get an answer. So we've mentioned the neighborhood parking sign. There is a Garden Grove sign, a seal on it, and it says code. Also, coming up off Euclid, turning left on Orangewood, soon as you hit that stop sign, that stoplight, there are three signs that says no stopping. They stop there and they park there. They have no care. We have children in our neighborhood, and they just zip through because they're running late. They don't care. Eric has a 91-year-old father. He takes care of his 91-year-old father. I take care of my 92-year-old mother. We are caregivers. On Saturdays, we have to go out to get our shopping done or what have you to take care of them during the weekends. We can't. Well, if we move, we were told, not our problem. Don't park near a school that has a baseball. That doesn't work. We are the taxpayers. This happens only on the weekends when they have tournaments, and these people are from out of town. So any help we can get, whether it's a horse, whether we have to go around and sign, get neighbors to do partition to make this a permanent parking, let us know what we can do to help stop this. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council, and staff. I'm Maureen Blackman, and once again, I'm here to talk about the candidate forum that will be held this Saturday, the September 28th, at the Courtyard. The address is 12732 Main Street. This is hosted by the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association in collaboration with the Downtown Business Association. All the residents are invited. All the candidates for Garden Grove has been invited. Most have accepted, but the hounding will begin later this evening if we don't hear from everyone. The doors will open at 10 o'clock. Program will begin at 10:30. The forum is, we had a really successful forum in 2022, and we're going to copy that. All the candidates will come up. They have an opportunity for five minutes to address the residents and attendees. We will not be taking questions from the audience. At that point, once their little elevator speech is given, they can go and retire to the activity room, the courtyard, and answer questions and have a meet and greet in there, deliver their swag and their signs and flyers and whatnot. So we feel everybody was really impressed with the way it went and positive about it, so we're going to continue. Let's see what else they have. Complimentary breakfasts will be served. It's free, but donations are always accepted. If you check out our website, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association Facebook page, that would be awesome. You can find any details, or you can contact me at 714-235-5360. I'm going to leave some flyers outside, but please invite everybody and looking forward to everybody attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Jane.
Hi, I am Nicole Himes, and today I'm here on behalf of the Women's Civic Club of Garden Grove, where I am serving as the second vice chair program. So our meetings, our year starts in October, October 4th, and we're actually having a panel. So Stephanie Klaufenstein, first Mayor Steve Jones will be there, and then we're going to have Officers Cortez, and Julian, and Misha, as well as GUSD's David Mora and Abby Broyles. So it's going to be essentially a panel on how the John Reynolds Youth Foundation kind of got started, as well as the partnerships that went involved with, you know, the city and the PD, as well as the school district, to kind of bring all that together and how they serve the community. So I'm just kind of inviting everybody to that. The location is at Chapman &amp; Gilbert. We're right on the corner. I probably should have brought the actual address, but I mean, it's on Google. And our business portion, it's open to everybody. It starts at 11:00, and then we usually eat lunch about 12:15-ish, but the actual fun presentation part, where you kind of get to meet everybody and ask questions, is at 1:00, and we're done by 2:00. And that's it, and hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a credentialed and certified career technical education teacher, as well as a science teacher. We have some young people in the back of the room, and I want to piggyback on what I said at the last, a little bit about what I said on the last meeting. And that is, we have to have more collaboration between the school district and the city, particularly when it comes to workforce development, having pre-apprentice programs for the young people to get involved in industry and career exploration and so on. Years ago, several years ago, a number of years ago, the district cut our skilled trade classes, woodshop, metal shop, auto shop, welding, and so on. For the over eight years, I've been advocating that they bring those classes back. Unfortunately, the district is not bringing those back to our 7th and 8th grade. 10 intermediate schools have lost their woodshop and metal shop, and the last two were cut in June of '16, so I've been an advocate on bringing those back. So that's the record. The school board members have done very little in the last eight to nine years to bring those classes back, particularly at the 7th and 8th grade level, and our high schools need more career technical education. This gets down to awareness, and we've had some speakers up here talking about fentanyl and other problems going on. So in addition to a shortage of skilled trade workers, we need to have more awareness on fentanyl and also preventing violence and bullying at school, reducing screen time. The governor recently signed the bill banning cell phones or smartphones in schools. I've been advocating on that for over a year, a year and a half or more, and I asked the district to do so, and they refused to ban it at all the schools. And so the social-emotional problems that are going on, school violence increasing, lack of empathy, and too much time on social media and screen time is hijacking the students from being able to be more effective learners. The purpose of this is to say that, yes, we do, as when I was a high school student at Pacifica, we do need a youth commission, in this case, a youth advisory group that would be a bridge between the city and the school district to provide opportunities, awareness, and so on, and to get safety issues out to the community regarding protecting the youth and so on, and bringing back our trade classes and doing other things and mentoring programs, et cetera. So contrary to what some of you have voted in the past, I'm asking the current council members who are going to be on after the new, you have new members, let's bring back our youth commission. We had it back in the '70s and '80s. I think, George, you were on the commission when you were a young man, and so was I. So let's do that, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ali Pacheco.
Good evening, members of the city council. To begin, I want to say that our community lives very close to Garden Grove Park specifically. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to address a pressing concern that has been affecting the safety and quality of life in our neighborhood. Over the past several years, we have witnessed a troubling rise in issues related to homelessness, which has significantly impacted our community. Specifically, we've encountered several serious problems. We've observed individuals climbing fences to access property hoses for unauthorized showers. We've had an individual caught specifically on video, naked from the waist down, using a hose to shower. Additionally, there have been disturbing incidents of pet deaths, break-ins to private homes, and drug use in our local park. These issues not only endanger our safety, but also erode our sense of community. While we understand and empathize with the challenges faced by those experiencing homelessness, the escalation in problematic behaviors necessitates immediate attention and action. To address these concerns, I respectfully request that the city take the following steps. One, increase patrols, implement more frequent police patrols or security measures in our area to deter illegal activities and ensure a visible law enforcement presence. Two, support services, enhance outreach programs and support services to provide individuals experiencing homelessness with resources for stable housing and rehabilitation. Three, community communication. We would like there to be a reliable channel for residents to report incidents and receive updates on the measures being taken to address these incidents. In closing, our aim is to cultivate a safe and supportive environment for everyone in our community. With your assistance specifically, we believe these challenges can be effectively managed, benefiting all residents and individuals in need. Thank you very much for your attention to this urgent matter.
Thank you. All right, we have four cards left that are all for the UVSA item, which is coming up next, so now would be the time to speak up. Eric Ngo.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Garden Grove City Council, city staff, and the members of the Garden Grove community. My name is Eric Ngo, and I'm honored to be here today as a president of the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations of Southern California, also known as UVSA, and a proud resident of Garden Grove. For most of my life, I have lived in neighborhoods between Brookhurst Street and Taff Street, very close to Little Saigon. Little Saigon is a special place that allows for every generation of Vietnamese-American to reconnect with their roots and encourage them to learn more about their heritage. As a Garden Grove-based organization, we want to bring the UVSA Theft Festival home to this beautiful city, not only for the Vietnamese community, but for the Garden Grove community. To introduce UVSA, we are a nonprofit organization that has been serving the Vietnamese community for over 40 years. Our mission is to preserve and promote Vietnamese culture and develop young adults into the next generation of leaders. The UVSA Theft Festival plays a key role in achieving both by celebrating our heritage and empowering future generations. Since the last time we hosted the festival in Garden Grove, UVSA has grown tremendously. We have been able to connect with more members in our community and continue to support young leaders through our programs, scholarships, and leadership development initiatives. With this growth comes a strong focus on financial transparency and accountability. We recognize the importance of managing our funds responsibly, and we have implemented expense authorization forms and made critical changes to our bylaws to ensure oversight and prevent any misuse of funds. For instance, any expense greater than $500 requires three points of approval from a project supervisor and two executive board members. In addition, we have established a board directors that oversees the executive board spending. These reforms have allowed us to be more transparent and ensure the resources are properly allocated. Despite the changes in our organization, our commitment to giving back has never wavered. Historically, UVSA has allocated approximately 80% of community grants to organizations within the Little Saigon area, with 7.5% in particular going to Garden Grove-based organizations. With that being said, I'm proud to announce that if this project is approved, UVSA will donate 50% of our profits back to the community, back to the community organizations in the form of grants, with 20% directly benefiting Garden Grove groups, a significant increase from that 7.5%. This donation structure supports our local nonprofits and ensures that the positive impact of the festival extends long after the celebration ended. We believe the festival will continue to serve as an important cultural event while also creating opportunities for... to serve as an important cultural event while also creating opportunities for our local businesses and organizations to thrive and for our youth to grow. Through this event, we want to show our commitment to Garden Grove, not just as a one-time event, but as a lasting partner and a neighbor. On behalf of UVSA and as a resident of Garden Grove, I humbly ask for your support in bringing the UVSA Tech Festival home to Garden Grove Park. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jolena Deng.
Hello, wonderful leaders of Garden Grove. I'm so happy to be here tonight. So I'm Jolena Deng. I was Miss Vietnam of Southern California 2023, and this was a pageant hosted by UVSA through the Tech Festival. And I just wanted to speak upon my experience during this pageant and just talk about how it's helped me to grow as a leader and just be able to have a chance to give back to my community. So throughout this pageant, we not only learned how to improve like our public speaking, grow in community, learn about our culture, but we also do a lot of community service through various organizations. And something that I thought about after I won the title was, okay, like, I know I have to go to all these community events now, but it inspired me to want to do something more for my community. So what I did was, I partnered with a local middle school, Warner Middle School, which is in Westminster, and I just did cultural workshops with them, partnering with some of my girls who participated in pageant with me. And this was just an amazing opportunity for me to just show my leadership, and as well as inspire the youth to care more about their culture and want to bring more to my community. I also remember, as a youth, I would come to the Tech Festival many, many times, just being able to dance for them, like learning the little hat dances with the fans, as well as participating in these Vietnamese competitions that they hold in the cultural village of the Tech Festival as well. And in these competitions, we had to learn about like the geography of Vietnam, just like the different ways of like the outfits that we wear, the foods, and there's just so many deep parts about our culture that is so beautiful, that I really want to be able to have our youth to have a chance to be able to understand and learn more about it. So I do know that there are just so many aspects that come into the logistics of like hosting a festival this big, but I just wanted you all to know that it truly does bring a community together. I've been to the Tech Festival probably like 15 years in a row now, and each year I see how all these college students, high schoolers, middle schoolers step up to volunteer and come together to make something just as big as this happened together. We all have the same goal in really just preserving our culture and being able to spread it to the younger generation, and I truly think that it's one of the best ways to do so, which is why I truly hope that you'll be able to continue to give us that opportunity to grow in our culture, to grow in our community with one another, and just have Garden Grove be that city who brings the, like the little city of Saigon. We're all local here, and I just think that it's an amazing opportunity for us all. Also, I live in Garden Grove. I've been here for 10 years. I love it here, and yes, I just wanted to thank you guys for all that you do. Thank you.
Helen Fan.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and the Garden Grove City Council. My name is Helen Fan, and I am the secretary and interim treasurer of UVSA. I am here to address our current financial state. As with many nonprofits and small businesses, the COVID-19 pandemic has drastically affected our operations and finances. In regards to both of these factors, we have developed efficient ways and new systems of restructuring our organization as a whole down to day-to-day obligations. UVSA has faced losses in our festival since 2023. This is a result of external factors such as the post-COVID environment, rising costs, and incidents such as the Monterey Park Lunar New Year shooting that has resulted in lower attendance. However, that is not to say that it'll dictate our operations moving forward. UVSA plans to work closely with our internal directors and city to prioritize budgeting. Our bookkeeping and the success of our most recent project over the summer is a reflection of this possibility. Since 2000, UVSA has provided community grants for many organizations within Southern California. This is a project that has not been active since 2020, given COVID, but it is something that we aim to revive with the upcoming festival. As of March 2024, UVSA and our Board of Directors has conducted audits to ensure fiscal responsibility. Since then, these audits have been occurring on a monthly basis. Through this, we remain dedicated to managing our resources and making well-informed decisions that position us for growth, stability, and resilience, regardless of all these external conditions. In addition to these efforts, UVSA is up to date with all of our taxes, and as reflected in them, we currently have $188,000 in our bank account. As we move forward, we hope to rebuild the legacy of our festival while continuing to serve the Garden Grove community. We look forward to collaboration to ensure that the UVSA Tech Festival remains a highlight of our community for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Miley Tran.
Hello. Oh, wow, this is higher than expected. Thank you, everyone, for letting us speak today. My name is Miley, and I am the chairwoman for UVSA Tech Festival 2025. I first attended in 2011 when I was only eight years old. This was my very, very first memory of Garden Grove. Ever since then, I've attended every single year, and the festival holds a really, really special place in my heart, as I didn't grow up in a Vietnamese community, and this was my first time really experiencing Vietnamese culture, and the festival's really special to me, as people really embrace Vietnamese heritage. Coming back to Garden Grove would provide a platform for local businesses to reach the greater community. That festival has grown so much since I first attended in 2011, and it's really, really amazing to see how much it's grown. Along the way, though, it has lost, lost some of its roots with Garden Grove and the heart of the Vietnamese community. I hope by coming back to Garden Grove that UVSA Tech Festival will be able to provide a platform for the local businesses to reach the greater community and recreate that same magical experience that I experienced in 2011. Whether it's just attending the newest cafe or seeing my friends that I met through UVSA, Garden Grove has become my second home. That Festival 2025 is a significant year to me. 2025 is the 50th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. The first time my parents mentioned this, it was really, really dark and gloomy to hear, but when I was reflecting upon this, I actually thought it was really amazing. It's been 50 years since the Vietnamese community has rebuilt itself away from the motherland, and I think that's really amazing. You go around Garden Grove, and you see so many Vietnamese businesses. There are so many cultural organizations, including UVSA. And for the generation, my generation, that didn't, or wasn't born in Vietnam, but was still able to learn about Vietnamese culture, I'm really, really thankful, and I'm really, really proud of the Vietnamese community. Although 50 years is still a long time, my parents often reflect on their home life, not their home in Vietnam, but their childhood. There is so much that has changed from 50 years ago, and my vision for this year is to bring back old Saigon. I want to reminisce on the childhood that my parents got that I never got to experience, and I want to connect with them, as I've never been able to understand that. My vision will come to life by coming to Garden Grove, the heart of the Vietnamese community, and my home away from home. Thank you.
All right, that's all the pink cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on oral communications that did not submit a card? All right, seen none, we will close oral communications, and that takes us on to written communications, item number four.
This evening, written communications, item number four is the consideration of a written request from the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations to conduct the 43rd Annual UVSA Tech Festival at Garden Grove Park, and Deputy Director Janet Palio is here to provide that report.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Staff received a written request on behalf of the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations, here in, after referred to as UVSA, to conduct the 43rd Annual UVSA Tech Festival at Garden Grove Park on Friday, January 31st through Sunday, February 2nd, 2025. Founded in 1982, UVSA of Southern California, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, community-based, and youth-oriented organization, designed to provide a united voice for youth and professional leaders from across Southern California. The organization is committed to leadership development, cultural awareness, civic engagement, and community service. UVSA is composed entirely of unpaid volunteers, including students, alumni, professionals, educators, and community leaders. The organization has hosted the annual Tech Festival in Orange County for the past 42 years, and in Garden Grove from 2001 to 2013. Over the past 42 years, the UVSA Tech Festival has significantly improved in many areas over time, such as better displays of Vietnamese culture and traditions, and increased collaborations with local community organizations. In previous years, UVSA has allocated a portion of Tech Festival profits to the Tech Community Assistance Fund as means of offering grants to new or existing community projects. UVSA has awarded over $2 million in community grants over the past 20 years. Grant recipients have included Garden Grove-based organizations, as well as organizations that directly benefit residents of Garden Grove. In 2024, the UVSA Tech Festival was held at the O.C. Farron Event Center with approximately 20,000 attendees. The proposed 2025 UVSA Tech Festival will bring together an international audience across a three-day weekend to showcase Vietnamese culture, food, and entertainment. Activities will include traditional performances, art exhibits, culinary showcases, and cultural games. The festival serves not only as a festivity welcoming the Lunar New Year, but also as an essential platform for celebrating Vietnamese culture, traditions, and unity among the community. UVSA would like to host a three-day festival at Garden Grove Park, as it offers numerous advantages, which include: The central location is easily accessible to the large Vietnamese population in Orange County and the surrounding areas, ensuring high attendance. The park provides a spacious environment for the diverse range of activities, booths, and entertainment planned for the festival. Garden Grove has a history of supporting community events, and the local residents have always shown enthusiasm in cultural celebrations. The park is equipped to handle large crowds, with ample parking nearby and accessibility features for all attendees. Little Saigon, located within Garden Grove and Westminster, represents one of the largest Vietnamese communities outside of Vietnam, making it an ideal location to showcase local businesses. Lastly, the 43rd Annual UVSA Tech Festival at Garden Grove Park will not only celebrate the Vietnamese New Year, but also strengthen the bonds within the community and promote cultural appreciation among all attendees. And the, if the proposal is approved, staff will prepare a one-year formal agreement between the city and UVSA. The agreement will include the following provisions. UVSA will reimburse the city for all of the city's costs attributable to the operation of the three-day festival. Therefore, it is anticipated that there would not be any financial impact to the city. UVSA and its contractors and vendors must comply with insurance requirements, including designation of the city of Garden Grove as an additional insured on the insurance policies. UVSA will comply with all city, county, and state laws and regulations applicable to the three-day festival. UVSA will be responsible for notifying residents and businesses regarding the event, and any roads that will experience closures, as well as the hours for these closures. And lastly, UVSA will be responsible for completing a financial review acceptable to the city. It is recommended that the city council consider the written proposal from UVSA, and if the proposal is approved, authorize the city manager to prepare and execute a one-year formal agreement between the city and UVSA to conduct the 43rd Annual UVSA Tech Festival at Garden Grove Park. This concludes my staff report. We do have UVSA representatives here in attendance to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Colleagues.
You know, I'm really supportive of the, of the request. I can remember taking my kids to the festivals when they were little, you know, and, and, you know, we had speakers talk about how it's great for them to learn a little about their culture, but it's also great for the non-Vietnamese folks to go and learn about, about the culture, and I think, I think that's what, one of the things that kind of makes America great. You can kind of learn and grow and kind of get to know everyone. So anyway, with that being said, they've got a long tradition of doing a pretty good job. I know they've had a few hiccups over the years, but I'm pretty confident with all the things they've discussed and let us know about, and all the little provisions that they put in there. I am very confident that they will pull off another wonderful festival, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Before I do the motion, I just want to say, I'm super excited that they're gonna bring it back to Garden Grove City, especially it's gonna be in Garden Grove, in District 3, Garden Grove Park. So that's why I want to be able to do the motion. But beside that, you know, I want this group to see that how much this council, the staff, and the city support you guys, because you guys are the only one that actually get to sell the ticket. Am I correct, Ms. Lisa, right? Yeah, so you are the only one. And hopefully they see, you know, we're gonna have many, many more events here in the city, and just for the resident out there, hopefully we will have more of different, you know, all the culture, you know, with the youth group to come here and celebrate and have a great event in Garden Grove City. So that's it for me.
You go first, Kim. I'm gonna be long. Okay, all right. I'm probably the one that's the most cautious of bringing back UVSA Tech Festival in Garden Grove. I'd like to make a point that we, while we support the youth and, and young people and that festival, and the fine things that you do for the city and the community, there have been concerns in the past. And I know that this is a, a brand-new group of organizers, of leaders, and we want to give you the opportunity to have a successful event, but everything has to be based on transparency, accountability, which you speak to in your presentation, and you're very well spoken. Do try to slow down a little bit, because somebody older like me, I know you have three minutes, but we have to catch up with everything you say. So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, and then I'm gonna make my comments based on that. I see here in your proposal, I think it looks like nine pages. On page six, we have a list of the board of directors, and I'm gonna read them off, because this is public record, and I want to see if anybody on this board of director is present tonight. Tammy Tran. Present or not? Duon Tony Nguyen. Present or not? Louis Bru. B-R-U. Present or not? Billy Lee. Present or not? David Nguyen. Present or not? Now, I made my point. I would have liked the board of director to be here tonight to answer my questions also. Nice to have all these young people, beautiful faces, gave wonderful presentation, but I will make an admonishment tonight. I want to see the leadership of the UVSA, including the board of directors. My admonishment to the young leaders here, including Mr. Eric Ngo and the others, you are fully responsible for this event, each and every one of you here tonight, and I want the leadership to be in your hands, because there's no excuse if anything goes wrong. It's entirely on you. We're in a public forum. This is being recorded. HGTV Channel 3 will post this within 24 hours. Watch it again. So this is an admonishment, and the second point I want to make is, the benefits from this event will go to this community, and I'm, I mean Garden Grove too, but not only Garden Grove, as you do also represent Little Saigon and a lot of different constituent schools, and I'll read it off. On the record, for the benefit of people at home who don't have the project proposal in front of them, constituent schools include Chapman University, Cal Poly Pomona, CSU Fullerton, CSU Long Beach, Fullerton, CSU Long Beach, CSU Northridge, CSU San Marcos, San Diego State, UC Irvine, UC Riverside, UC Santa Barbara, UC San Diego, University of Southern California. Now, I'm not going to take a roll call to see who's from each of those universities, because you guys know who they are, and eventually we'll get to know you. The point being, there's a lot of constituent schools, and you're representing the reputation and honor of our community. This responsibility cannot be taken lightly. And I'm not going to repeat the history, because you can all read on it. And I'm not going to say anything disparaging or negative, but I want to ask the staff to add one thing, if it's not already in the staff report, because I requested this in the gender review, that the agreement, if we do decide to pen it, has to be reviewed annually, one year at a time. I may or may not be on council by the next event or year-to-year, and I want every council that's seated to have their opportunity, like I'm having tonight, to ask questions, make comments, and to make sure that we have guardrails for anything that may go wrong. So Janet, show me where on this report of yours that we have baked into the agreement year-by-year.
Councilmember Dovin, we did state that it will only be a one-year agreement, so if this is approved this evening, then in 2025, we will have UVSA come forward once again with a proposal to submit to the city council for consideration of a 2026 TEP Festival.
Thank you very much. So that's confirmed. The last point I want to make is: In past years, there have been some questions as to the proceeds and who benefit from the proceeds. In this project proposal, we have a few groups mentioned that have been assisted by the funds from the proceeds. I'm going to read them off. It's on page nine: Garden Grove Fire Department, Garden Grove Adult Daycare, Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, Little Saigon TV, Baong Viik News, Vietnamese American Arts and Letters I don't think that's a complete list, and I'd like to see a complete list. And I want a fair process where the applicants will get fair consideration as to the fundings they may receive. And I don't see on here, these nine pages, anywhere where you state the criteria for receiving your funding. So please have that by the time you have your event and/or the time that you will report on the events. This is important. Who benefits from your funds? This is transparency. This is accountability, and I'm asking for full disclosure. Now, whether you're forthcoming or not, that's entirely on your leadership. And every council will get to review your successes, and I'm counting on your successes. So I'm enthusiastic, but I ask you to proceed with caution. That's my message tonight. Thank you.
Well, aren't I glad I went last? A few things to note: I want to insist the city not put additional criteria onto this organization that we would not do to any other, asking to reserve our space. I already feel that we've gone above and beyond in asking the individuals asking for this with all the questions that we've asked, because I know we don't do that with other requests that come in to use city facilities, other than will they pay us and can they pay us, and then do they pay us? I don't think we should be requesting how they spend their money, who it goes to, other than the fact that if it's written that they contribute to a percent of the city, then we ensure that they do that, just to confirm in the agreement. But going above and beyond that, I think is excessive, and if we're going to, it's a dangerous precedent to set since we don't ask that of other organizations, so I think it's very unfair. And if we do do that, I will be here next year as a resident of the city, questioning the city's actions in doing so. Number two, when we want to talk about transparency, we should also note that the individuals in question, why there was the down with this group in having UVSA do the TEP Festival, had nothing to do with the students. It was with their advisory elders, whatever we want to call them, that were assisting them, that mismanaged money. And there was also council members at the time that were sitting on the dais that you know very well, who were also doing some things that I would not condone or I would question significantly. You can go ahead and look up articles, and it will give you the truthful story, and it will actually implicate the two council members that did this activity as well. So if we're going to be transparent, then be transparent. Don't accuse the students. They had nothing to do with it. Moving forward, you guys know that the eyes are all on you, so I just ask that you really try your best, so that you don't have to go through this in future years. I am a proud VSA High School alum, board member. I am very excited to see this come back to Garden Grove. I will second the motion, and I just hope that folks can come out and enjoy and have a good time. You know, it was made apparent to me by a council colleague member from a different city when we were discussing festivities in another city, that for the Vietnamese community, it is very different. For a number of individuals who came here as refugees, there was a loss of attachment to their home country. They have not been able to go back. There has been a loss of language, of culture, and this is one way that we, as a community, can preserve that and share that, not just with our Little Saigon community, but with members who are not Vietnamese, as indicated by Councilmember Bridgum, for folks to come and learn and enjoy and also partake in the celebration with us. And so I wish you nothing but the best of luck. Have a good time. Have fun. I know this was a little bit of a downer, but let's turn that around. I wish you nothing but the best. Please have a good time. Spread that love of your community, your home away from home, and I will just say, welcome back to Garden Grove. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Shall we call to vote?
Well, Mayor, Council, I feel need to address that. While I welcome my co-colleague enthusiasm, and I've made a point of not bringing up anything from the past, point number one. Point number two: I have not made any accusations of anyone here tonight or anyone in the Point number three: I am asking the leadership, and I assume the people here, not the people who are not here, to accept the responsibility and to be transparent. I'm not burdening you with any other conditions that is not imposed on any other groups. I've been confirmed by Janet Palayo, our Assistant or Deputy Director of our Community Services, that this will be a year-by-year annual review of the agreement, and I'm satisfied that that's baked into the agreement, so the next council will have the opportunity to review your successes, and I hope you will be successful. So those are the points of caution that I've raised publicly and clearly, so that you may proceed with caution. As for me, I'm going to cast my vote the way I think it should be cast for myself, and I'm only one vote. The rest of the council, if you have a majority, you will be cleared to proceed. So there is no impediment to going forward. I wish you the best of luck, especially on the 50th anniversary of the fall of Saigon. This is a very politically-charged event. There's a lot to be learned. We have elders in the room. We have educators in the room that was spotlighted tonight, and they deserve the recognition for their contributions to our community, 35, 36-plus years ongoing. And I hope that you would ask them for their advice. And remember, we're not doing this just for the Vietnamese or the Little Saigonese. We're doing this for everybody in Southern California. Keep in mind, Vietnamese Americans are now mainstream, so be inclusive. Be respectful of every community, and give back equally if you can. Those are my thoughts. Take it with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I'll make it really quick. I just wanted to, I wanted to give a word of encouragement to the students. I support this. This is an opportunity for you guys to shine. I wouldn't hold you accountable for the past, and what I would say is just hold each other accountable. So as a nonprofit group, be accountable to each other. If you see somebody that something's going wrong in a certain direction with one person, you know, hold each other accountable. You have a chance to prove to the community of whatever past sins there's been, and I'm not going to get into any of that, but you have an opportunity to prove to the community that you guys can do this, and we can start afresh and move this thing forward, and I hope you're very successful. And I wouldn't hold, really, the people that aren't here accountable, because they're probably in school or, you know, farther away, at a campus farther away. It's hard to get here on a Tuesday night. So just a word of encouragement, have a great festival, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May we call for vote?
Motion received. Six yes votes, with Councilmember Dovin abstaining.
All righty. Thank you. So that ends written communications. Why don't we take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll go back to...
That's a good idea.
... to make it.[1360.42]
The master plan will also assess the impact of inflow and infiltration flow on the system. Additionally, the sewer hydraulic model will be updated and calibrated using flow data collected by monitoring devices throughout the district. Other tasks will include assessment of the fourth mains and the suction and discharge pipes at lift stations. The updated master plan will become the district's new planning documents describing improvement needs and expenditures for the next 20 years. STAB requested proposals from four firms and received four proposals. A panel, a panel of four members rated the submitted proposals on the basis of qualifications. Based on the evaluation results, AKM Consulting Engineers rated highest in qualifications and its ability to provide the services for the, for this project. There is no impact of general funds. This project is included in the 2024-25 Sewer Operation Budget and will be financed with the sewer funds. It is recommended that the Sanitary District Board award the contract to AKM Consulting Engineers for the professional engineering services to prepare the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Master Plan update. In the amount of $833,346 and authorize the General Manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the district and make minor modifications as needed. This concludes the STAB report and STAB is here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any questions on the report? I know this is good timing. It's been a long time and with the new development we have in the city with all the ADUs and with the commercial development, you know, it's a good time to update this sewer master plan as, as needed. Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Motion in a second. Let's call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any, we do have some items under matters. We have receal and, receive and file, excuse me, the 2023-24 update of the franchise agreement with Republic Services and I believe we have a staff report from Mark.
Thank you, President O'Neill. At tonight's presentation, we are going to be giving a one-year status update on the implementation of the agreement with Republic Services. Let me get to the correct slide. Joining us tonight, our co-presenter, we have Jake Ahuwalu from HFNH Consultants who serves as the city's solid waste consultant. Also in attendance tonight, we have Michael Johnson, who is the market manager for Republic Services, and also Stephen Herring, who is the area manager for Republic Services. Tonight, we'll be talking about program updates, contract performance monitoring, service improvements, and upcoming events in available programs. And we're going to try to keep this as brief as possible.
Thank you, Mark and Council. Revisiting some of the items that we talked about on our last update, completed and ongoing items include the Cowercycle SB 1383 Corrective Action Plan that was related to SB 1383 implementation. With that came enhanced education and outreach. We had started the battery collection at city facilities along with the Republic Scholarship Program, which built upon the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Women's Division, piggybacking off of their existing scholarship program. Republic is in the process of completing their truck fleet replacement with the commercial trucks already completed, residential on the way, along with an electric truck expected to come November 2024. Finally, SB 1383 program enhancement, including education, 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 and enforcement per the regulation of SB 1383. And then we also take a look at some of the complaint and inquiry data that Republic submits to us on an ongoing basis. This slide here, we're looking at the complaint analysis and this is looking at the raw data that comes from the call center related to escalations. We have our top five escalation topics here. Temporary containers, bulky and incomplete collection, service issues related to how containers are serviced, perhaps lids not being closed, things like that. The top two escalations that we have here are incomplete collections, miscollections, and then container exchange. These escalations have been fluctuating on a quarterly basis. You see the different colors that highlight the quarter and the different shades of that are the months there. Recognize that incomplete collections are something that are being addressed with the route, rerouting on the commercial and residential routes. Container exchanges are related to requests that come in to change containers if they're broken or damaged or they need replaced containers because of new service that they're requesting. This is a issue that Republic is working on, making sure that they have the inventory and the staffing available to replace those. We expect this to improve as of Q4 of this year. This graphic, we're looking at miscollection tracking. This is data related to commercial bulky item and then the three streams of our residential collection. You'll see that from July 2023 to December 2023. Five out of those six months surpassed that 600 incomplete collection mark. With the rerouting that occurred towards the end of 2023, we really saw the impacts of that starting in 2024, resulting in all of those months, January 2024 to June 2024, hovering below that 600 incomplete collection mark. And the slide that we have next will put that into perspective. When we look at the number of collection opportunities, on average, there's over 1.2 million collection opportunities per quarter. So that's how many lifts there are. That's how much trash Republic, trash recycling, organics Republic is, is scheduled to pick up based on that service data. So when we're looking at this, the incomplete collections versus the total service opportunities for the period of the July 2023 to June 2024, I believe the percentage is just .126% of the service opportunities actually being marked as incomplete collections. So putting that incomplete collections into perspective, I think helps understand where we're at. And then with that, pass it over to Mark. Thank you.
As Jake mentioned, Republic has made significant improvement in reducing collections. Most of that is due to a commercial reroute that they did that was completed and put completely into service by March of 2024. Through that reroute, Republic added approximately 10 routes to the city. Some of those routes were for the expansion of commercial recycling and also for the introduction of an organics program. So Republic did provide a significant service improvement to the customers within the district service area. And lastly, just want to highlight, we have our upcoming events. Our last community cleanup event of the year is going to be on November 9th and that's going to be at the Public Works Yard. We also are pleased to be working with Republic and the Women's Division of the Chamber of Commerce for a scholarship program. We'll be having more information on the scholarship program released in quarter four of '24 or quarter one of 2025. We are working with Republic and the Chamber of Commerce to provide the information, release that out to the community. Additionally, another area of our contract requires Republic to introduce a business environmental ambassador program where they will recognize businesses who have done an outstanding job with either recycling diversion or with organics diversion or a combination of the two. Lastly, also want to just highlight, we have our household hazardous waste collection sites. We have our Sharps program. And lastly, we have our bulky item pickup program, which is up to three pickups per year, up to 10 items per pickup. And that concludes our presentation tonight. The staff in Republic are available should there be any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that. Yes, questions?
Yeah, on the upcoming events, the Sharps program, where would those drop offs or that disposal be held at?
The Sharps program is actually a mail-in program where individuals can go to Republic's Garden Grove specific website to order those Sharps containers that will be delivered directly to their house. And they can also be dropped off at the county household hazardous waste facilities.
Okay, very good. My other question was actually in regards to the electric truck. So it just says truck, not trucks, plural. So is this sort of like, we're piloting this? We're just seeing how this is going to go? I mean, I think about just the weight of the battery for something like that and we know how hot they can get should they combust or catch fire and there's already trash potentially in the truck. Kind of walk me through what the plan is with that.
So our, our current agreement with Republic does call for one electric truck that was supposed to be in service by April of 2023. However, a truck that, that Garden Grove was supposed to receive was delivered to a neighboring city and that truck has experienced nothing but problems and difficulties as far as maintenance and operations. So Republic never delivered us our electric truck. Instead, we're getting a different truck from a different manufacturer that Republic specifically designed to work. And so that truck is supposed to be in place in November 2024. It has a 60% greater capacity for lifts over the prior electric truck. And so also since our Garden Grove fleet is basically going to be comprised of brand-new vehicles, we will not have to be worried too much about compliance with the state's electric vehicle mandate until those trucks are due for replacement.
That was going to be my next question. Is it going to be, would the electric truck be for recycling yard weight?
It's going to, so far what we know, it's going to be for recycling.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Oh, yes.
Just a quick comments and another question. So the comment is about when we saw the chart with like a lot of missed call and complaint and all that, but I'm glad to see that it trended down. So that was what we're looking for. So something that you know then.
Our last community cleanup event of the year is going to be on November 9th, and that's going to be at the Public Works Yard. We also are pleased to be working with Republic and the Women's Division of the Chamber of Commerce for a scholarship program. We'll be having more information on the scholarship program released in Quarter 4 of '24 or Quarter 1 of 2025. We are working with Republic and the Chamber of Commerce to provide the information, release that out to the community. Additionally, another area of our contract requires Republic to introduce a business environmental ambassador program, where they will recognize businesses who have done an outstanding job with either recycling diversion or with organics diversion or a combination of the two. Lastly, also want to just highlight, we have our household hazardous waste collection sites. We have our Sharps program. And lastly, we have our bulky item pickup program, which is up to three pickups per year, up to 10 items per pickup. And that concludes our presentation tonight. The staff in Republic are available should there be any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that. Yes, questions?
Yeah. On the upcoming events, the Sharps program, where would those drop offs or that disposal be held at?
The Sharps program is actually a mail-in program, where individuals can go to Republic's Garden Grove specific website to order those Sharps containers that will be delivered directly to their house. And they can also be dropped off at the county household hazardous waste facilities.
Okay, very good. My other question was actually in regards to the electric truck. So it just says truck, not trucks, plural. So is this sort of like, we're piloting this? We're just seeing how this is going to go? I mean, I think about just the weight of the battery for something like that, and we know how hot they can get should they combust or catch fire, and there's already trash potentially in the truck. Kind of walk me through what the plan is with that.
So our current agreement with Republic does call for one electric truck that was supposed to be in service by April of 2023. However, a truck that Garden Grove was supposed to receive was delivered to a neighboring city, and that truck has experienced nothing but problems and difficulties as far as maintenance and operations. So Republic never delivered us our electric truck. Instead, we're getting a different truck from a different manufacturer that Republic specifically designed to work. And so that truck is supposed to be in place in November 2024. It has a 60% greater capacity for lifts over the prior electric truck. And so also, since our Garden Grove fleet is basically going to be comprised of brand-new vehicles, we will not have to be worried too much about compliance with the state's electric vehicle mandate until those trucks are due for replacement.
That was going to be my next question. Is it going to be, would the electric truck be for recycling yard weight?
It's going to, so far what we know, it's going to be for recycling.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Oh, yes.
Just a quick comment and another question. So the comment is about when we saw the chart with like a lot of missed call and complaint and all that, but I'm glad to see that it trended down. So that was what we're looking for, so something that you noted issue, and you took action to fix it. Because it's really annoying when you have, you know, your trash that got mispicked up. My question to you is about a scholarship program. I know that in here, that information will be relayed to the Chamber of Commerce, but it is something that, you know, going to be worked to the school district? Or is this something that anyone would be able to apply? Or do you have any information about it?
I'm going to let Mr. Johnson from Republic answer that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I apologize for my dress tonight for your honorable body. But yes, I get to wear two hats tonight, really. One of them will be as the incoming president of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. And this was an effort where we can work together with the existing program, increase and enhance that program. So this past year, Republic Services contributed $14,000 into that fund, and that process will continue to build. But absolutely, the school district is the basis, the foundation of the marketing. I think we need to expand upon that. The program is eligible to anyone within the actual sanitary district boundaries, which are slightly different than the city boundaries. So we just have to make sure of that. But we can market in the city's newsletter, I'm sorry, Republic's newsletter, and a ton of social media as well. And we do have in-house graphic designers, and we'll be happy to provide some little thumbnails. But I think it's a partnership with your various city departments, the chamber staff, and the school districts particularly, since that's where the students are that would be our target.
I know that you mentioned that for the sanitary district, you have different than the city, right? So when you keep out the scholarship fleet, make sure it's distributed evenly or somehow not just that area, but not here, so.
There's a few boundary areas in the county and non-incorporated areas, so.
Okay. Thank you, that was it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Brading, and I'll get to... Generally, what I've seen, I got to say, Republic has done a pretty good job overall. I mean, you know, I remember we'd get a few complaints here and there. Those complaints have dropped down tremendously. Matter of fact, I don't think I've gotten any in the last probably three months. When I do, I call you and let you know. But I mean, when you're delivering a service like that in a city this large, there's bound to be, I mean, you're going to have, oh, you know, the driver forgot to pick up that trash can, or you know, something happens. But when you call, and they get out there pretty lickety-split and resolve the matter. So I just want to give Republic kudos for that. They're showing progress, and the numbers here really reflect what I'm seeing personally. And so with that, that's, I just, just a quick comment. Thank you for making things better. Director Dovin had a comment. Question?
Yes, I'm going to follow up on Councilmember Brading a little bit there. And I've noticed usually in and around the holidays, something may get missed, including at my place, and you've been very responsive. My wife made the call, and it come right out, and it gets picked up. So we don't have anything to complain there. I do back up my Councilmember Brading on that, that you guys are out there and very responsive. But like I say, it's usually around the holidays, and something doesn't get picked up. That's my comment. But I want to follow up on page three of four SB 1383 implementation, because I think we just had a rollout of the organic recycling. And I kind of want to follow up on that, if you have anything to report as far as implementation, and if we're on track to be in compliance with all of... I mean, there's a lot of legislation coming down. And if I recall correctly, in some cases, the organic recycling or that service, there's a charge to some commercial, like restaurants, who are, have to come into compliance. I'm reading right here that the last sentence on second paragraph is, "Republic staff is currently working on processing SB 1383 waivers and focusing on bringing the last remaining non-compliant commercial and multifamily properties into compliance." I want to know more what that involves. And you're working on processing the waivers, and how long will those waivers last? And how many do we have non-compliant? Any statistics you have so far? So I'm comfortable that the rollout has been successful, and that we'll be following up on it, and we won't be hearing some commercial property or multifamily properties come in here and raising some issues with us. So if you have anything to report or update us, I'd be appreciated.
Councilmember Dovin, to answer your questions, currently, the sanitary district is listed at an 86% compliance rate for SB 1383 for the commercial and multifamily sectors, due to the fact that the district had already been on a three bin collection system for residential. Residential has been deemed considered compliant since September of 2022, and we essentially rolled out that service to the residents to tell them about the food waste. The waivers are valid for five years, and the waivers are based off of the amount of waste that's generated per property. So there is an inspection component that Republic does have to go out, and they have to verify the different types of waste streams that are found in the dumpsters. And then as far as the number of waivers, the waivers are continually coming in. Even after we've completed automatic enrollment, people are still requesting waivers for services so that they don't have to pay that monthly service fee. So it's just, it's something that we continually expect to be processing for the lifespan of SB 1383.
To put it in perspective, say, for example, you have an auto shop, and, you know, they don't create a lot of food waste. You know, the workers maybe eat their lunch, they don't have a lot of leftover to throw in the trash. And those types of businesses are commercial businesses, but they don't generate a lot of organic waste. And those would be the type of businesses that would get a waiver, and it distributed every, you know, periodically.
So I want the properties or businesses affected to get an update from us, because I don't want somebody to get hit with a bill maybe two, three years down the road, because I'm hearing that the waiver may last another three years, but at some point, it will expire. And we will have an enforcement component for compliance. So nobody should be caught surprised. That's why we have the five-year period. So the idea is to avoid an unexpected bill. Somebody's renting out the commercial property, and then they get a bill some point down the road that they're expecting. We had this issue come up. And that's why you're here, to kind of speak to that generally. So the public know that there is some enforcement component that's going to come down the road. It's not completely unexpected. And if they have questions, to raise it now. And if you have anything to report, your answers are very on point. Thank you for that.
Going back to the waivers, each individual waiver is valid for a period of five years. So if a company was granted a waiver in December of 2023, that waiver is valid until December of 2028. Versus if somebody applies for a waiver today, that waiver is going to be valid for five years from the date that it's approved. In working with the city's IT department, we do actually have a waiver database system that we're keeping track of all of the waivers. And part of that system is going to eventually include notification that waivers are about to expire and need to be renewed.
Just real quick, before we get a motion or vote, I want to thank you, because like code enforcement, you know, the trash business is a dirty business. You know, I love the word opportunities to pick up trash. That is just amazing. And with tens of thousands of trash containers to pick up, and everybody in this room and everybody in the city here that deals with this and Republic, we all know what transition the last two years was, a lot to take on. Contract negotiations, abiding by the legislation, rolling these things out. You know, we all know what's happened. And I can see in your trend on your graph that, you know, I knew as a resident when you could see how, you know, maybe some missed containers, I heard about it from neighbors and so on. But I knew what was happening. I knew that you're setting out new routes, drivers are moving neighborhoods. The general public didn't really understand that. But we all communicated that here in our areas. But you could see in your graph there that, you know, that was just the end of last year, the beginning of this year, and now it's tapered off. And you guys are doing a great job. What was it, .01? .012%. So you're doing a great job, just want to give you kudos, because like I say, you only really hear about the complaints. So you get this one time, maybe once a year to get some kudos. So we want to make sure you get those. So with that, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to... George is moving it. We got a second. Let's call for the vote on this. Thank you very much, everybody.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. Thank you very much. That will lead us to adjournment of the sanitary district. The next meeting will be Tuesday, October 22nd, in this room at 6:30. I will now turn it back over to Council.
All righty, thank you. We will reconvene City Council and go to consent calendar. It's recommended that, we already did five and six, so it's recommended that seven through 18 be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Public hearings, item 19.
This evening's public hearing item is acceptance of fiscal year 2023-24 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER, and recommend its transmittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Mr. Timothy Throne is here to provide that report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The purpose of this report before you is to request City Council conduct a public hearing regarding the city's fiscal year 23-24 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAPER, and to recommend its transmittal to HUD. The CAPER details how the city carried out projects and activities identified in the previously approved fiscal year 23-24 annual action plan. During the fiscal year 23-24, the city utilized federal funding to expand and preserve affordable housing, improve low-income neighborhoods through public infrastructure, and assist special needs groups such as senior citizens, homeless, and those who are at risk of becoming homeless. The city assisted approximately 18,068 low-income individuals through various programs and services. Highlights include, we've created and retained 28 jobs, provided assistance to 22 businesses, and assisted 258 families through the Boost Program. We created 14 jobs and assisted seven businesses through the Jobs First Program, completed the Stewart Drive Permit Supportive Housing Project that supports eight households who are chronically homeless with supportive rental housing. We provided rental assistance and wraparound supportive services to 33 households who are homeless or at risk through the Heart Program. Provided homeless services to 214 individuals, assisted 4,265 low-income residents through infrastructure improvements, assisted 21 low-income households through the Home Repair Program, assisted 6,314 low-income residents with community services, and provided community outreach and education to 6,555 individuals. Additionally, the city expended an additional $264,137 in CARES Act and HomeARP funds in 23-24 to develop and expand programs in response to the coronavirus. ESG CV accomplishments are included in the CAPER and allowed the city to provide another 329 homeless individuals with street outreach, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and shelter services. A public notice was published in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese newspapers announcing the public comment period, which began on August 23rd, and will conclude at the end of the public hearing tonight. All public comments received are included in the final submission of the CAPER to HUD. It is recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 23-24 CAPER and accept the report and direct its transmission to HUD. Concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions, staff? Before we open, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, a couple comments, one of which, when I look through this, I wish more of the community had stayed, because we had several people come out this evening talking about the homeless issue and what we're doing as a community and as a council. And this so, I think, greatly highlights and showcases the wraparound services and just our strategic effort and the synergy and the collaboration that we have here in Garden Grove tackling some of our most vulnerable populations. So I hope the community at large will take a look at this. It's, I think, very important information. One thing to note, I sit on the childcare task force for our first five OC, and so to see 258 families have greater access to childcare, it's definitely a need and an ongoing need here in Garden Grove and in Orange County. So that's to be commended, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
A second.
Joe?
I have just a quick question. Because it's a lot to digest, and I didn't catch all of it, but is there a financial review component or an auditing that applies before we send this to HUD?
Yes, absolutely. So every quarter, and some of these providers are reviewed monthly. I do desk audits monthly, and when they submit their expenditure reports, they provide me with all of the backup documentation. I know what it's being spent on. And I also get a performance report, which shows me who they're assisting and what types of activities they're assisting.
Thank you, because I'm looking at the pie chart here on page two. It's very complete. The layout is easy to read. This is all public record. We have the breakdown of expenditures from the HUD grant funds, $3,049,088 business assistance, affordable housing, homeless services, public improvements, administration, and public services. Those are the categories I'm reading off. And I think what you mentioned is applicable to each of these categories. And you're comfortable that we don't have any concerns that HUD will be able to review it like they do quarterly or annually. And there's, it's quite consistent of how we've expensed these funds in the past, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just, this is available currently on the city website for review, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and this will stay up for another month or two?
Yeah, so the public review period is officially going to end, but I transmit this to the report section. So I have like a report stab. This will go onto the report stab, and it'll be available to the public ongoing.
And I'd like to recommend to the public to actually log in and take a look at this stuff. It really is an eye-opener of what the city's doing and, you know, what progress we're making in a lot of efforts here, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks, Tim. Monica? All right. Items for consideration, item number 20.
Item number 20 is authorization of the issuance of a purchase order to Oleata Ford, Inc. for the purchase of nine police patrol vehicles and four police administrative vehicles. And Deputy Director Sam Kim is here to provide that report.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, tonight, City Council is being asked to authorize the purchase of nine new police patrol vehicles and four new police admin vehicles from Oleata Ford, Inc. through the Institute for Public Procurement Compared to B Program. The vehicles will meet the city's guidelines for replacement. The surplus vehicles will be sold at public auction. Based on the results of a recent Institute for Public Procurement Compared to B Program, Oleata Ford, Inc. is the lowest bidder with just under $725,000 for these 13 new vehicles. There is no impact to the general funds. This purchase will be paid with the Fleet Management Fund. It is recommended that the City Council authorize the Finance Director to issue a purchase order in the amount of $721,942.48 to Oleata Ford, Inc. for the purchase of 13 new police vehicles. This concludes the staff report, and Steve is here for any questions. Thank you.
You have a couple of questions I always like to ask, Mr. Sam.
Yes, sir.
One is when we will take delivery and when will they be put into service?
It's hard to tell. It takes anywhere from six months to one year to get the vehicles. And for the nine police vehicles, when we get them, we'll put it in reserve as we have a need arise, and we'll be replacing the patrol vehicles. But for the admin vehicles, once the new vehicles arrive, and those will be replaced right away. Thank you.
Anybody else, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion in five seconds. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 21.
Item 21 is approval of an amendment to the agreement with Willdan Engineering for consultant engineering services, and Mr. Kim will provide that report.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, tonight, city council is being asked to approve an amendment to the contract with Willdan Engineering for consultant engineering services to continue to fill engineering staffing needs until the associate engineer vacancy is filled. On January 23rd, 2024, the city council approved the contract with the Willdan Engineering to assist the city's engineering division in meeting ongoing staffing needs until the staffing vacancies are filled. Since then, one vacancy was filled in March 2024, and the division is in the process of filling the second vacancy. The city is in the recruitment process for filling the existing associate engineer vacancy. It is anticipated that it will take about six to eight months to complete. Once it is filled, it is anticipated that continued support from the consultant engineers needed for a couple more months to ensure a smooth transition. The proposed contract establishes a not-to-exceed amount of $250,000 to cover staffing needs, unexpected delays in filling the position, as well as other unforeseen needs. There is no impact to general funds. Contract costs will be funded by gas tax and major M funding. It is recommended that the city council approve the amendment to the contract with the Willdan Engineering in the amount of not to exceed $250,000 to provide consultant engineering services to meet engineering needs until the permanent associate engineer position has been filled, and authorize the city manager to execute an amended contract with the Willdan Engineering and make minor modifications needed on behalf of the city. This concludes the staff report, and staff is here for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple quick questions. So on the packet pay one of the eight, it's had a compensation for total compensation under the agreement, so it exceeds about $300,000? So that's different with the $250,000. I'm just trying to, what is it?
Is that the original contract amount? And then we're asking for $250,000 add to that contract?
So that's gonna be $550,000?
Yes, ma'am.
So that $250,000 is that equivalent for one FTE, one full-time employee, or is that just any time within service that they will provide?
It is including one staff member service plus any other additional service to manage any additional projects.
So how do you quantify that in terms of, next time when you call and say, oh, we're not gonna need more money, so do they give you a certain amount, or it just guarantee that with the $250,000 on top?
It will be guaranteed for the staff augmentation services, and then if we need any additional services, then we'll have to get a separate proposal for man our cost.
Just to clarify, the $250,000 is not to exceed for the additional amount. The original contract has a rate sheet, so they do charge per hour depending on the level of service that we're requesting. And it doesn't mean, our original contract says that it doesn't guarantee a specific amount of work, right? So the $250,000 is only to allow work to be given to the consultant without having to come to council every time we issue a new project to them, up to $250,000. But it doesn't mean that they get the full $250,000.
Okay.
It could be much less than that depending on the amount of work that they actually do for us.
I got it. Last question. So the reason we have to go up because the services, we need more service, or was that, what caused that?
Yeah, we had two vacancies. We filled one. We still have another one. It's gonna take some time. The city and other cities and even private industries having a hard time filling positions, right? Everybody's fighting for bodies. And so in the meantime, we do need the engineering assistance. We have a lot of projects going on. In addition, we always had consultants to do specialty work that our staff may already have too much work on their plate, and if we need additional assistance, we have these contracts in place to draw on if we need specific projects for these consultants to help us move forward.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 22, Arsha R. Ventidos.
Item 22 is approval of an agreement with Synergia West LLC to provide compost procurement services, and Mr. Mark Ladney is here to provide the report.
Sorry. Tonight, we're here to talk about compost procurement as required under SB 1383. SB 1383 is the state law, as we all know, that talks about organic waste diversion from the landfill part of SB 1383, also mandates that the city and counties within California procure a certain amount of recovered organic waste product per citizen that resides within the city. One distinction I want to make is that procurement is against the city. The sanitary district is exempt from procurement, so we're specifically talking about city resources on this. CalRecycle adopted a tiered approach to procurement. Last year was at 35%, which we were able to meet with 99.6% compliance. 2024 is a 65% compliance, and 2025 and future years is 100% full compliance. In order to meet this current calendar year for procurement, Public Works staff has worked internally with other areas within Public Works to see where we can use and apply compost and mulch internally. And despite our best efforts, so far this year, we have only managed to achieve a 6% compliance with that requirement. And to put it into perspective, when we're talking about compost, we're looking at over 5,200 tons of compost, or over 8,000 tons of recovered organic waste product. In order to meet our 65% requirement, we issued an RFP to basically purchase compost and send it out to agriculture for agricultural uses. The lowest bidder, or the most responsive bidder for that program was Synergia. So our presentation tonight is to award a contract to Synergia for those services. The RFP included pricing for 2025 and 2026, so we do have pricing for a three-year period. However, we can also use composted mulch as part of our P3 project, and also we are working with the Economic Development Department to use mulch on the bike, excuse me, bike and pedestrian trail as part of the improvements out there. So we will not be using all of the award money for compost and mulch procurement.
Oh, I think he's, yeah.
Sorry. The first year of the agreement is $67,000, with future years of the agreement about $120,000 each. At that, at this point, that concludes my presentation for council. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Mark. George?
One quick question. So this is specifically for meeting those goals, not for, like, this isn't the compost we give to the community?
So all of that compost that we give away at the community events counts towards our procurement target.
Okay.
And so, like I said, our procurement target is such a high amount because we have such a large population that at those events, it's literally just a drop in the bucket.
So basically, when we have these compost events, please show up, help your community, grab a couple bags of free compost, help a brother out. So, all right, thank you.
Adam Mosch? Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 23.
Item 23 is a ward-up contract to RJ Noble Company for the 2024 Various Street Microservicing Project, City Project Number CP 1422,000, and Five-Year Landscape and Irrigation Maintenance, City Project Number CP 1438,000, and Mr. Kim is here to provide that report.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company for the construction of the 2024 Various Streets Microservicing Project and the Five-Year Landscape and Irrigation Maintenance Service. This project will include the following street segments and site locations: Knott Street from Lamson Avenue to Chairman Avenue, Valley View Street from 22 Freeway to City Limits, Booker Street from Hazard Avenue to Westminster Avenue, Lamson Avenue from Springdale Street to Knott Street, Ward Street from Hazard Avenue to Morning Side Drive, and parking lot located at 12996 Euclid Street. The project will split into two phases. The first phase consists of addressing each street and the parking lot with a different rehab measures to properly manage the unique circumstances, and will involve following elements: removing and reconstructing failed pavement areas, coal milling, micro-surfacing, asphalt paving, replacing over curbing gutter, cross gutter, sidewalk, and wheelchair ramps, adjusting utility covers to finish grade, installing catch basin inlet screens and CCTV cameras, removing and replacing trees, making landscaping and irrigation improvements, completing restoration of traffic striping, signing, pavement marking, and markers, and re-establishing centerline ties and monuments. The second phase will consist of a landscape and irrigation maintenance for five-year period for the parking lot located at 12996 Euclid Street. Two qualified bids were received and opened by the city clerk's office on September 9th, 2024. The lowest responsive bidder was RJ Noble Company with a total bid of $2,883,465. This bid amount is within the project budget. The licenses and references of the contractor have been reviewed and verified by the staff, and all other documentation is in order. Should the city council approve the contract today, the construction can begin in November 2024 and be completed by March 2025. The 2024 Various Streets Microservicing Project is funded by gas tax and major M2. The parking lot improvements and the Five-Year Landscape and Irrigation Maintenance Service are funded by the general fund. It is recommended that the city council award the contract to RJ Noble Company in the amount of $2,883,000, I mean, $883,465 for the construction of the 2024 Various Streets Microservicing Project and the Five-Year Landscape and Irrigation Maintenance Service, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with RJ Noble Company and make minor modifications as needed on behalf of the city. This concludes staff report, and staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Joe?
I have a couple of questions. Look at page two on the specification, item 5.4, plans and specifications. Five-year landscape and irrigation maintenance is pretty broad. I want to zero in on trees. Are there any tree removal or replanting involved?
Yes, sir. There will be removing trees and replanting included with that service.
Great. And what happens after the five years is up?
Then we'll have to decide whether city's internal staff will take over, or whether we will decide to go with other additional services with other contractors.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. That takes us on to matters, and we do have two items listed. The first is item number 24.
Item 24 is update on the Civic Center revitalization project as requested by city manager Kim. And Mr. Craig Beck is here to provide that presentation.
Good evening, council. There we go. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We wanted to give you an update on the Civic Center revitalization project, and we have our Edgemore team here tonight to go through some slides for you. Brian Dugan is going to introduce his team, so Brian?
Sure. Thank you, Craig. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to be in front of you all again to give you an exciting update on the project that we're all really proud of. And Christina reminded me actually before we came in here that it was just under a year ago that you actually approved the selection of us. Wanted to thank you for that and wanted to thank you for your continued support throughout the last year. I think you all will see when Christina and Keith, you all have probably seen a little bit less of Keith, but you'll see a lot more of him now. He is our development manager onsite for the project, so he is now posted up, you know, right across the street in the project office for the site. He lives up the street. He is now a, you know, fully involved resident and community member in the area here, so very excited about that. You'll hear about the design from Christina. So the scope for Christina as our pre-development manager has really been to oversee the ENA period and then also take design all the way through the 100% CD set, construction document set, which is where it is now. So we're at that stage, and we're reaching sort of the final pricing on everything. And then Keith is really going to oversee the project through the construction process, so he's here on site. I thought there was one other thing I wanted to say, but I'm blanking now, so I will turn it over to Christina. And Christina's going to talk to you all, give you a sort of the overview, that's what it is. So Christina's going to talk to you about what we've actually achieved in the last year. And then, and it is pretty amazing. I think you'll see, it's incredible. And I've been a part of a lot of projects. This one, what we've accomplished in a year since we were selected, it's special. It really is. And it can't, it can't happen without the involvement of the city's team, the police department, and it's something I'm proud of. I know we promised you all that we could get this done, and the time that we've gotten it done, and so we're really proud to be here today. And Christina will actually go through all of the things that we've accomplished in the last year, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice for me just to have to do the intro.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm definitely excited to talk through, you know, where we are in the design and what we've done over the past year. Craig, I think, are you? Thank you. So we'll talk through a year in review, as well as a design update and a construction update. So year in review, as Brian mentioned, almost to the day, one year ago, we were selected to start the ENA process, and over the past year, we have been really moving at lightning pace to get through the design phase. You can see along the top, we kicked off the project on October 3rd. We've had open, several open houses with the community to get community feedback. We broke ground in May. Lisa told us we needed to break ground by June, and we did it. So, you know, we're just moving along quite nicely. And so you can see up on the top part. Also, there is a lot of council involvement. We got council approval for us to kick off on September 26th. Sequel was completed in January, which is a, was a huge lift for the city. We got full project approval in March, financial close in June, and now we're ramping up to the final GMP. For the design piece, right, basically, six weeks after we started, we aligned with the help of council on the massing plan for what we wanted to do. A few months later, we brought some facade conceits to council, and we aligned on one to move forward with. We hit 100% DDs in April, or sorry, beginning of May, and then we started looking at our interior work. So we spent a lot of time before looking at the exterior of the building, massing. We spent a lot of time recently finalizing some of the interior spaces. We'll show some updates on that. And then we've also really honed in on what the park layout is going to be, so we'll talk more about that as well. And then, as Brian mentioned, on Thursday, we are going to be hitting print on 100% DDs, which is actually the one, oh, sorry, 100% CDs, which is actually the one-year anniversary of us signing on to this project, which is, we're all very proud of it. And I just want to reiterate, like, we could not have done this without the full support of council, the community, staff, PD, so we're just very thankful. We feel really proud of this partnership that we've been able to establish, and really looking forward to bringing this whole thing to the finish line. So for a quick design update, I know we've shown several renderings of the exterior of the building, so I just wanted to show a couple new renderings of nighttime shots, which really show some new life with some lighting, but then from there, we'll go to more interior spaces. So as I mentioned, we've been looking at So as I mentioned, we've been looking at some interior design. You can see PD, they came up to AC Martin office a couple months ago so we could start looking at finishes. Spent a lot of time hitting things, scratching things, making sure that the materials we're selecting are durable. So it's really great for everyone to get to actually see the products in real life. And so now we're getting to see those in fruition in the drawings. We also started looking at the furniture package. So we toured four different furniture vendors, got a feel for the vendors themselves as well as the furniture. Again, really looking at durability and the longevity of the products that we're looking at. And PD participated in that as well. It was fantastic to have their participation. And here's some, just renderings of some of the interior spaces. So here are some of the public areas, the lobby on the left and the community room on the right. And some interior conference spaces. So we spent a lot of time working with Noel and the IT team, looking through every single conference room. What is the functionality of the room? What technology is needed? We're really excited for the functionality of this building. It should be very easy for the end user to come in and use it on day one and have everything function well. And then the break room, we spent a lot of time looking at the break room, wanting to make it a place where PD felt like they could gather and have a little slice of home in the building. So we spent a lot of time on that as well. And then from the park development, on the left, I just want to show you where we started. This is the very first image of the, of the park, very high-level conceptual. And you can see where it is today, where we've really laid out what that space is going to look like. And if you go to the next page, we've also spent a lot of time looking at the amenities and features of the park. So starting sort of in the upper-left corner, there'll be public art in the park, bringing some of the old, existing art from the, the existing park into the new park. And then fitness equipment, having an area near the senior center for fitness activities, fitness equipment. And then that'll also be right next to the walking and running trail. We know a lot of citizens like to walk and run in this park. So making sure we have wide walkways for people to be able to walk and run is, is very important. And then also the main event lawn. This event lawn will be able to house several people, different types of events, movies, concerts, et cetera. For concerts, there's an event stage that will be able to house those concerts. So we can get a lot of use out of this facility, both for programmed events as well as just day-to-day use, having open space for people to use. We've also talked about a memorial grove. So sort of behind the stage, giving it an area of solace and peace for memorials for folks who have, have loved ones who have been lost. That'll be really an area of, of solace in the park. And then the entry plaza. This entry plaza will really mark the entry coming from Civic Center Drive to Acacia to show that you have arrived at a place and really welcoming people into the park. So we're really excited about how this is all coming together. And here's just a couple renderings of the park. So here's one view from looking east down Acacia towards that entry plaza. And then here's a view of the event lawn. And just here's a couple other, other views. You can see how it's coming along. But the upper left, that's the, the walkway. It's, it's wider than it seems in this. I think it's 22 feet wide. And then another view of the entry plaza and some of the paths up to CMC from Acacia as well. And with that, I'll pass it on to Keith and he will talk through the construction update.
Thanks, Christina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow members of the council, city staff. I'll quickly give you an update on the construction and the outlook on what you'll see moving forward. So just a couple pictures here. Since, since June, we've demoed the existing park, the parking lot, and utility lines that exist underneath the site to prepare the site for the building pad. We've also started grading, so there's two middle pictures there. We've started grading the dirt so that the site's level. And currently, right now, we're installing utility work on Euclid Street, as you may have seen, and are also installing geopiers to improve the soil so that the site can withhold the building. So that's why you see a lot of equipment across City Hall right now. Next slide. So looking ahead, a lot of exciting activities for us as we continue to proceed into construction. Well, next week, we'll begin continuation of the utility work on Acacia Street. So there'll be more activity on Acacia Street in front of City Hall. And then we'll be looking to start foundation work really soon. So that will be fabricating rebar and concrete will start coming to the site. And then early spring is when you'll start seeing the building go up vertically. So the superstructure of the building, the parking garage, will start to be a visual contrast to where we are now as of today. And then that will culminate in the building topping out in May. That's a huge milestone for us. And then subsequently, we'll begin building the envelope of the building. And then by this time next year, October, we'll have a watertight building. So a lot of exciting construction activity in front of us, but very excited in this project and looking forward to the year ahead. So, thank you.
And I, I did want to also comment on the fact that this team has really done a lot of work to get the past year under our belt, so to speak, and have drawings ready for a permit set. And to think forward that within a year, there's going to be a building that's not only vertically complete but also watertight. That's quite a lift and really exciting time. And so I want to thank the Edgemore team and everybody that's working on this project. I want to recognize PD for their weekly involvement there in all of these development team meetings. And we couldn't get there without the PD team. And certainly, this council's been a strong advocate for this project. So thank you for your support. And we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't have questions, but I do have a couple of comments and a suggestion. First, thank you very much for your review. Very complete, got a lot of good information. So I really don't have any questions. Thank you, Christina, Brian, Keith, Craig. We're getting know each of you by name now, which is nice. We've been working with, with you long enough. And I think the annual report, even quarterly report, is very exciting because it's, it's coming to life. It's coming off the drawing board, literally. I just want to ask Keith a little bit if there's been any change orders that we have to address, you know, the asbestos pipe being that got replaced. We're trying to stay within budget. And the last suggestion I want to make is, I did talk to Christina, if we can have a onsite walkthrough when it's safe to do so? Because I'm very visual and very hands-on and I like to walk through and kind of get a feel for everything. So whenever that can be scheduled further down the road, please put that on the agenda.
Absolutely.
For sure. So to answer the question on the transite pipe, yes. So we did encounter transite or asbestos pipe on the site. And we did address that correctly with the air quality management district. They have a process that we had to go through and they approved that process and we abated and removed it off the site to continue construction. As far as change orders, there are some design aspects that are enhancements to the project that we are considering and are discussing. But as far as this project in the current scope, we're within budget and are aiming to reach that GMP as we conclude on 100% CD.
If I may, Mayor, Mayor and City Council, we are looking at some additional elements to the project, which includes solar. So that energy solution will be coming back to the council for action, but it has been considered in our contingency budget. So that would be the next item that would be brought forward to the council in the next 30 to 60 days.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first apologize that I couldn't make the review as a new mom, it's really hard to schedule additional meetings. And only when Lisa will force me to extend an existing meeting, then it somehow magically works or I just have her on my lap while I do it. Which brings me to my next point. I know that I've mentioned this before. One thing that is extremely important to me is to ensure that the locker rooms and any other facilities that female staff will be using is adequately equipped. I did notice that in the pictures of when we had officers there that there was no female representation. And so for me, it's really important that we have that perspective, such as, you know, whether moms are coming in with their young children, that there's, you know, eye-level things for kids to be distracted with because coming into a PD office can be very overwhelming. And obviously, you want to shield your kids from that, but sometimes you have to bring them with you wherever you go and you can't, you know, that, you can't change that. Then more specifically, we do have a lot of female staff on the administrative side, not just on the officer active-duty side, but regardless of the fact, we do have them. And if they're coming back from maternity leave or whatever it is, I want to make sure that they have a space that's comfortable and easy for them to use. The number of times that as women, we go to restrooms and they're, you know, not in great shape because of all the things that women have to worry about. So I just want to ensure that those that are working extremely hard to keep our community safe have a space that's going to be clean, have all the products that they need and easily accessible. I would prefer for a woman to help kind of guide that because, no offense, men, you guys don't use what we use and things are usually located extremely far away from where we need them. And so just to have that perspective as a walkthrough to really like think about where things are going and as are needed and creating a space where women can go and have a dedicated area to pump or what, feed, whatever they need to do is extremely important to me. It always has been, not just now that I'm a new mom. I advocated, I'm sorry, Omar, we stole your room for a lactation room at one point. So it's important to me. It always has been. It's things that you don't think about, but you have to worry about and more than half of us have to worry about all the time. So it's extremely important. And I know I mentioned this in a previous meeting when you presented, and so I wanted to bring it back up because I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah, I will give a quick update on that. And yes, we don't have several female PD officers, but our team is actually probably half-female. So we definitely have several moms on the team. There are multiple lactation rooms planned for the building as well as multiple wellness rooms throughout the building. So it's very forefront. And as we're now picking furniture for those lactation rooms, I want to make sure that they're comfortable for people who need to pump because it's a different type of chair that you need. So absolutely, definitely making sure we consider as we're picking the furniture for that room, where do you sit? Where can you put your pump? And all that stuff, making sure everything can be accessible. So definitely considering that as we, as we move forward. So we've got a lot of females on our team, a lot of mothers, and definitely top of mind.
And I would just request that the chief allocate like one designated person if possible, just because you also have to factor in that a lot of these women have a lot of gear on them, have other things. So like, where are they going to put it? In addition to all their equipment that they need for that activity? And things like that, just, you know, I wouldn't know as a, you know, non-officer person going into that room, like, what would I need if I were an officer? So just having that perspective and that walkthrough, I think is going to be really important. I only say that because I, I, you know, had, when I was doing ride-alongs, I've gone into their locker room and I'm like, oh, this is kind of drab. And like, as a female officer, I would imagine, they kept it very nice and everything like that, nothing to shame them. I love them. They had everything that they needed, but a lot of them were self-provided. And you know that a lot of organizations now are providing free hygiene products, et cetera. So just want to make sure that we're also thinking about that and that doesn't get lost because it's extremely important.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick note. So first, thank you so much for spending the time to walk us through, you know, before this meeting so we could give input and ask questions. And also thank you for listening to the little thing that we mentioned, like some other thing that I still remember about the water feature and the long-lasting of the equipment and the design outside, like all the little thing that I asked and I brought up and, you know, throughout the whole process, you were able to answer a lot of that. So thank you. I know that last, when we reviewed that time, I just asked you about the angle of the screen. So you guys look into that, right? So that way, we don't want, in the afternoon, we look at the screen and the sun just side direct there.
Yes, absolutely. As we continue to refine the park design, we'll do some shade studies so we can see where the, where the sun, we can do that with our models. We can do some shade studies so we can see what the glare is going to be, what the right angle is for, for any movie screen so that there, it's not glare. But yes, we will do those studies. The park is still a little bit fluid, so that will all happen as we start to really finalize some of that stuff.
Okay. Well, like you mentioned at the beginning, this is just a great outcome from the good teamwork from everybody. So thank you, and I cannot wait to see it become reality.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I, you know, I've been in construction and here in Orange County for, I'll be 40 years in May as an electrician. And I've been on some very high, high-profile jobs, big jobs, hundreds of millions of dollar projects. And at the pace at which this is going with the level of professionalism is outstanding. And a lot of it has to do with the council working with the staff and you guys, but it is pretty remarkable. My question though is if you had to guess in percentage, general contractors and the subcontractors, how, what percentage of that has been bid out, already bid out and done?
We're in our, we're bidding out the last package right now. So I think we're about 70% bought out.
Okay. Good, yeah. And a lot of that might be detail and stuff like paint and carpet and...
Yeah, but we're going through finished trades.
So all the major trades have been let out?
Correct. MEPs were brought on quite early. But yes, so the last trades that we're looking at right now are finished trades.
Got it. Okay, well, thanks. Keep up the good work because time is money and as we know...
Yes, it is.
Well, this is a big project for, milestone project for Garden Grove in the last, you know, 70 years really. And we're spending a lot of the residents' money and we, and we're getting a high caliber quality project so far, so let's just all keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
This question is a little bit redundant, but you've bid out the most of the work. The supply chain, there's no issue, no delays as far as we know, everything's online?
Correct. As far as we know, we've gotten ahead of some of the things that we brought up before. A lot of the equipment has been ordered, switchgear's been ordered. So, so we've gotten ahead of it as much as we know. We're going to continue to be on top of it the whole way, we have to be. But we've done everything so far to make sure we're getting ahead of it.
Okay, great. And I think I asked in the review, but can you show me on one of the plans where the digital sign might be, the billboard that's coming in? We have the digital sign, right?
The one that was on the corner of Euclid and...
Yeah, yeah. Is it going to still be there?
It's not going to be in that location. I believe it's moving north.
So we're, we're working on relocating that right now.
Okay. So you don't have a diagram where it might be yet?
Not yet. We're looking at the corner of Euclid and Stanford. But that hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see that come in and my skybridge, right?
We...
That's one of the advancements that were coming to you.
We got you, George.
And helicopter pad, if I, if I recall.
Thank you.
I wanted to do the helicopter pad.
Yeah, just one quick, one thing. I just want to echo Councilman Win, Penaloz is the same as, I think you need to get a female officer in that mix because, you know, the law enforcement role is way different than any other job. And there's things associated, you know, bulletproof vest, where do you hang that? Sam Brown, your gun belt and all that, where do you hang that when you're going into that? You know, all those kinds of things need to be looked at specifically, I think, with a female officer and not just a regular mom or, you know, because they'll think about those type of things. But, and again, I think Joe's overpass, that's not one of the change orders that was approved, right? Just making sure.
Not yet.
The Joe Doe Vinn overpass, so, all right, thank you.
All right. Thank you all for the updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25.
Item 25 is update on the Central Cities Navigation Center first quarter operations as requested by city manager Kim. And Ms. Kristy Lee is here to provide that update.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is an update on the operations of the Central Cities Navigation Center requested by city manager Kim. In June of this year, the Central Cities Navigation Center began its operations. During the first operating quarter, we focused on five ongoing goals. Onboard and train staff, streamline referral intake and onsite client protocols, obtain client documentation and complete their HMAS registration, expand local outreach and leverage donations, and develop a program of client activities and execute necessary contracts to support the Central Cities Navigation Center's operations. We have successfully achieved and made positive progress on these goals. As of yesterday, September 23rd, the Central Cities Navigation Center is at 94% capacity with 80 out of 85 beds occupied. Additional updates on protocols, transportation, and activities will be presented by our operator, who is here today. At this time, I'd like to invite Eric Richardson, Director of Housing for the Volunteers of America of Los Angeles, to share the updates and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I feel like I might pull the short straw here. So I will be brief. I know you all want to go home. Kristy's covered most of the details. I just put a brief slide up for, just to give you that recap, because it seems like a lot of months since I was here before we even got in the building. As you know, Garden Grove has 50 beds from the center. And as Kristy said... And as Christie said, we are now at 80 individuals out of the 85. And we've got two beds left for Garden Grove. Um, I believe we've got, um, two left for Westminster and one for Voughton Valley. So we're pretty much there over gradual, over gradual intake. Um, as you can see, we've got total clients exited at 58, um, 39 for Garden Grove. Just to really make sure you understand that, yeah, that's some exits that have happened through behavioral issues, but a lot of those exits are AWOLs. So what tends to happen is we give clients three, three days, 72 hours. If they don't come back for 72 hours, then we exit the, we keep their belongings, if there's some belongings there, and they are allowed to back, they are allowed back into the navigation center. But it tends to be AWOLs and that tends to be something that happens across all navigation centers and shelters. People come in, they try it out, doesn't work lots of times, they'll come back again because they go back out and go, yeah, I'm better off there. Um, as you can see, the percentages are there and we'll send those slides out. Um, and the last few details were referral and intake procedures. I have to say overall, um, I've opened a lot of shelters and a lot of navigation centers. I have to say this, I'm hoping this is wood, this has been one of the smoothest transitions of opening, um, a navigation center and a shelter. And a lot of that goes down to the city, it goes down to the PD teams and everybody else involved because the collaboration work has meant that it has gone incredibly well, which leads me on to the referral intake. So the referral intake comes through PD. So everybody that comes into the center through the three cities comes through each of one of, each one of the PD departments. And that means that they get screened by any organization that comes through and they get screened to ensure there's no sex fences, they don't have any warrants out, and that they've got a link to the actual city that they're coming from. And that has been incredibly good as well, both from intake and I have to say from exit because we contact the PD every time somebody gets exited so they know where they're going and they know who's coming back out, all the organization. So that's been really, really good. Transportation, we've got that in process, we're just starting the shuttle journeys now. And we're looking enough for the county to actually, and this is hard to believe, give us a 12-seater minibus, virtually new, that we're going to be able to use as well, which is excellent. An ongoing program activities, so we've got activities starting to build up for clients that are onsite. Uh, and just one of the other things that's missing off there, because it's that stage, is the next step is let's get these folks out, let's get them housed and let's get them moved on. One client housed so far and it's, it's building on that process now to get those individuals housed and ensure that they're in the CES queue, which means they can access vouchers. But as again, I just want to stress how smooth it's gone and how good a collaborative effort it's been to make it work. I think it's a credit to all of you guys, to the city and to the PD department especially.
Uh, Joe.
I have a few questions, actually.
Of course.
I don't want to make this meeting longer, but some of the questions you could probably answer right away and then some of it might be later down the road, um, when, when your necks come for...
Yeah.
...reporting. Um, the referral intake, if, uh, B well O C, they do that too, right? It's not just PD?
Uh, well, they still come through the PD.
Okay.
Everybody comes through PD. It's to make sure that certainly while we were opening, what we usually do is we have one referral route when we start intake, when a new program. And then it's probably a review, probably second quarter, we'll have a review and say, is it working? I would say presently, it's working incredibly well because it means everybody's coming through that one unit. And it also means that if B well sees somebody out on the street, PD can check and go, oh yeah, we know that guy, we know who that is and they've got that record of who that person is. Because as we know, it's the PD guys that tend to see them on the street.
So it could go through different organizations?
Yes.
Street medicine, O C, but the, uh, PD, um, will be the one that's...
The referral route.
The referral.
And then we work directly with P, with B well, for example, once they move somebody in, we work directly with them after the referrals come in.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about how fast these beds are filling up. Um, I, I don't know what your projection was when it opened, but are you concerned that it's filling up a bit fast where we have very few vacancies left?
It, it's got, it's one of the slowest that we've ever filled up.
Okay.
Normally, normally when we open, if it's an, yeah, yeah. And that's, and, and because it hasn't gone boom, and again, this goes back to the city and the PD of understanding that let's build slowly to make sure that it's a new building, it's a new team, it's a new program, make sure that works. And that has been incredibly helpful to get this running as well as it has done by doing it like that.
Okay.
Because we've opened lots of those, certainly in LA where it's being banged, we need 85 people in tomorrow. So it, it's been quite slow and, but what we'll find is there'll be, there'll be an uptake now.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a numbers guy, so my next questions will be numbers. Uh, as a ratio of, do we keep track, PD might have some numbers of how many people we have on the street, unhoused, in Garden Grove, and as a ratio or percentage of how many are we able to house temporarily from that number? Do you, do you have any percentage?
I wouldn't have that number. I'm sure that, I'm sure that Christie and the city team and certainly the PD would be able to give you that wider number of, of individuals that are out there, certainly from our example. So we have a, a small contract with Garden Grove delivering outreach from VOAs' point of view, and we're out there working with individuals on the streets and the PD, and we're getting a lot of people in. And we certainly work closely with PATH, who are doing the encampment resolution work as well. So we're doing that kind of close relationship of moving in. And so I don't have those numbers unfortunately.
Okay. Um, so I haven't been to the facility myself since it's operational and I don't know, um, what the, uh, the, the housing situation looks like, but, um, I, I see the breakdown, male, female, couples, pets. Are there kids involved? Do we have numbers on kids?
No, there's no fam, there's no families.
No families at all?
No families.
Okay. Um, so what is the average stay looks like? How many days and what is our turnover rate?
Yeah.
With the exiting, so what's the turnover rate and what's the average length of stay?
So the average length of stay, we're just coming up to our first eight clients that will have been in there 120 days. So 120 days is the target to try and get people housed within that period of time. That's the target. Experience is across navigation centers and shelters, it's usually longer than that finding that accommodation. So, so that's, that's the 120, 120 days is for eight clients that have come in presently. So because we've only been open sort of a quarter, we haven't got that average of how many people are going to stay in there yet. What we do do is though, and I want to make it clear, is that we work with Danny who was here earlier, who's the program manager, and immediately we get to 120 days, it's a complete review of what we've done with that individual. Are they on CES? Are they on the list to get vouchers? How many units have they looked at? Where is all their documentation? So there's a review of those individuals. Because we never want to be an organization or a shelter that sits back with people just signing a shelter. Because some individuals will be sat there maybe because we haven't done enough work with them, others will be sat there because they just get used to it and they go, do you know what? I don't want to, I mean, it's easy here, I get my meals. So it's constantly working with those individuals. So we haven't got the exact percentage, but I can work those percentages out next time.
Please, I'd like to see those numbers.
Absolutely. We have an actual exit which shows exactly why everyone was exiting and who went where, so we can create that in percentages as well.
Okay, last question and maybe a succession too, is, uh, on exit, upon exit, do you have any survey or review process where the person exiting can give us feedback and can we review some of that? I'd like to know when they exit, what their situation is, and there's no way for us to track, uh, how well of a job you're doing, for lack of a better phrase? Uh, maybe that direct feedback, I don't know if you're doing any such survey or exiting interviews.
So we always do exits, exit surveys for individuals that are going to get housed. We also do surveys and we give grievance forms out as well for any clients that are staying in the, in the navigation center. And we also do where they can make comments about the navigation center as well. So we can do that because that's an ongoing process. Because the idea is, we don't want people to feed back generally when they're getting exited, we'd like them to comment to us when they're in there. So they can say, do you know what, that isn't working and if that carries on, I might leave. So we try and push that as much as we can do with case managers and monitors. When people exit, it depends where they're going. Obviously, if it's an issue of AWOL, we don't have time because they go. If it's an issue of some safety concerns, because there might have been some behavioral issues, it's hard to do. If they exit simply because they go, Joe, it hasn't worked out for me, we do record that, so we can definitely give you that information.
Oh yes, please, work that into the next time.
Yeah, of course.
So we can have kind of a real life, real time, uh, situation so that we can have, get a good, better feel of, of what our services look like and how happy our clients are.
Yeah.
Uh, it will help also the, to let the public know that, you know, we are achieving some level of success and delivering on our promises to them.
And it holds us to account as well.
Thank you, sir.
And it means that we can then change whatever we need to do within delivery in the center to make sure we can move it forward.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy?
I have a one quick question and one comment. So the question, how do you handle the people come and leave and then come? Because I, I was saying, I saw that.
When we, when we say we handle it, if somebody, if somebody leaves and we know they're going, because they go, look, I've had enough, it doesn't work for me, we always talk to them before we go and we talk through it, a bit like you were just saying, we talk why they, they might be going. Lots of times it tends to be, I don't like the atmosphere or I don't like the person who's in the next bed or is in this unit or I know that person. Because these people, individuals are all from the same city, so they tend to know individuals. Um, but we always say, you're always going to be allowed back in. Even when we exit them for behavioral issues or any other concerns, we'll still say, look, come back. A good example would be an individual we had who we had to exit. Um, they, they were using drugs at one point and also they, they were a bit little, they weren't violent to anybody else, but they were hitting a wall, et cetera. And so it became a, a violent issue. And he agreed that to leave, but he came back to us probably a week later and was incredibly apologetic and went, I didn't realize how good this was or I didn't realize how I needed to move it forward. And so we worked with them at that point and go, well, it's not going to be straight back in, we need to work with you and see where you're going. So we've done that and now we've moved that individual back in again. And it's working through that process with them, depending on who it is and what, where they are in their, their life really.
So do you track that? So you know that this person was here, you know, 10 day and then come back another 10 day?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, we can track that. We have that information, yeah. I mean, we have a pretty large spreadsheet that covers every individual and every bed and how long they've stayed, whether they're pets, whether, uh, you know, they've got behavioral issues, what those issues are, so we can do that as well.
So for the people that exit the program, do you have, um, some agency that you work with or do you have to sort around to find options for them?
Well, what we usually do is we go back, go back directly to whoever's referred in. So for example, that could be B well, B well might have referred them. And, but we'll do that, unless it's an incident that happens, say overnight, and it has to be a, a time when we exit somebody straight away. If it's something that's leading towards, because what we do is we give people three strikes generally, we talk with them and we do put them on a behavioral contract and we work that through with them going, look, you know, if you keep going down this path, this is where it's going to be. If we get to that point, we start talking to B well, for example, if they've referred them in and go, do you want to come in and sit and have a meeting with us to talk to them to say, if you follow down this path, it could mean that you get exited? So if it comes that they get exited, we contact B well, we always contact the PD departments as well to say, look, Joe, unfortunately, it looks as though we're going to have to exit in tomorrow. So do you want to come down and you can work with us to see where they're going, what other options there are? Because there are other options, there's Yale, there's other centers, so we do offer those services as well. We basically have a sheet with all the other services that they might be able to access.
So, um, this is my last comment. I went there two weeks ago and I was impressed with everything.
Right.
Um, you know, how, this is, I, I think a major milestone for us, 80 people full, right? So just imagine like when we did this, a lot of people say, oh, we don't know if people are going to come or thing like that. I think this just tells you that we did, we, we made the mark, we get the goal. So that was great job. Um, the people that I came, they all were very respective. They were so classed, they got the place to stay. It was quiet, peaceful, um, people came to me, they said that they loved the play, they loved the food and they, they just happy to be there. And the gentleman that left, a younger gentleman left and then he came back, he was waiting outside the door and waiting to get in because someone had to open the door. But it just tells you that this is a successful story. Um, earlier Senator, um, Janet, we mentioned that, you know, some of the programs are safe and we need to, um, put more money there and some doesn't work, then we take the money away. That just told me that, you know, people will worry and we got it, we, we tried, we didn't know how it worked, but you could see that this is the outcome from everybody here and then include your staff. So from now on, like everything, um, we would, you know, some of us will worry about that this, um, feels so bad, but that's going to be your staff, going to be the one that have to be, make sure that you have, you know, the standard, the guidelines, so that way people follow. But when I was there, I was impressed with everything, the people, the staff, um, everybody was so nice and so, um, like I said, it was so peaceful when I was there. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have tried to make it that, because it is a fairly small shelter compared to, you know, your big Yales, 400 beds. So there's an element where we've probably been a little strict in some ways, when we've had somebody with real behavioral issues. We have a lady and she's from Voughton Valley and she, she would just scream periodically and, you know, that upset everybody else. So we worked with her as best we can, but in the end we had to exit her. But that's to try and make that environment for the others, okay? Otherwise you lose more people from that shelter, from the navigation center through one individual, so you have to work through that. So we tried to create that atmosphere, which is, should have been great.
Yeah, every single person I talked to, they were just like so grateful of what they got and they, they were just happy. So thank you, great job. That was it.
Let's just use one more minute. Um, so I'm still concerned about how fast it's filling up and what happens after we're at full capacity and there's no more admission? What do we do? Turn them away? Waitlist them? Refer them to some other facility or what happens after that?
Yeah, so we've already started talking to the three PDs, um, certainly Jeff in, in Garden Grove, or is very aware of the numbers. Um, so the options are, as you said, there's Yale, there's, there's other shelters that individuals can go for. But then it becomes more of that clock for us as an organization. We need to get these people housed, we need to get them into other accommodation. Now, preferential would be, we need to get them in permanent accommodation. Some options might be, there might be, might be, um, uh, project room keys that they might be able to go in, there might be other units we need to go in, but that becomes that next step for us of, right, we need to move these people through. Because what we don't want is for it to become stagnant and have the same people in there and you can't get any new people in. So that's the push on us to turn around those individuals to get them to move on to units. And that's pretty much where we go, but we are working with the PD from a point of view of who else can move on and go to different places.
And if I may, um, Mayor and council members, um, you know, this is a strategy that we're And if I may, um, mayor and council members, um, you know, this is a strategy that we're deploying. You know, this is our, our goal is to provide an alternative for the unhoused population to receive a shelter and services. So we've hit that mark. So the next stage is obviously, um, a big lift of Ursula's team. And now we're working collaboratively with our affordable housing partners to identify potential affordable housing sites and, you know, deliver that permanent supportive housing solution, which is the, um, the goal. That takes time, that takes resources. Um, one of those could be in collaboration of utilizing the project home key resources, but we have to identify a site. We have to identify a development partner. We need, um, council direction as to relating to our project vouchers, because right now we still have a wait link, waitlist of individuals that are waiting to receive those vouchers. So any type of permanent, permanent supportive housing, um, approach requires an allocation of vouchers. So we're going through that next stage of, um, alternative as well. And we do anticipate in the near future coming back with some additional ideas and some additional direction from the council. But, uh, we're also along the same lines of what are our next steps and what are our opportunities as well.
Yeah, I'm just looking ahead a little bit and I see you have a full plate already. Yes, it is. Um, I I've referred successfully, uh, through a B Well C, uh, uh, an unhoused person and they've gotten very good services. So I I've been interacting, just not directly at the facility. Um, lastly, I like, I like your, uh, behavioral contract. I I, if I could, see one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there there are people coming in and, you know, they're terrified. Not everybody is is enthusiastic about going to a facility. So they sometimes ask me and others, like, what is it like there? What can they expect, uh, who's there and that sort of thing? So i- if if you may share that, I'd like to get a a behavioral contract, because some people will not fit in. They they're just not for them.
Yeah, and we'll have some people that will come and and, you know, they might have, we had one individual, I think it was a Garden Grove individual, it was a lady and she had some real behavioral health issues. So it was, it was some real concerns when she was referred in. But again, we worked really closely with Jeff and the P D. They hadn't seen her when she had one of her episodes and she had it literally at intake. And we all agreed and went, this this just isn't going to work for her and it isn't going to work for anybody else in here, which is unfortunate. But if you're going to manage the center, you've got to think about the majority as well as the minority as well to make sure it works. Uh, the other thing I would say about moving people through is whenever you open a new shelter or navigation center, you you're looking at ground zero with all eighty. They've all get, they'll get their I D ready, they've got to get the documents. Whereas the longer it goes on, some of those people have got documents. So this new person might not have any I D, but you know fifty percent of the others have because you've caught up. So the process of moving them through that, 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 that's, that scheme will usually works easier.
Yeah, just one quick, I I, the opposite, I see that we're filling up as a positive sign. You know, we have an annual point and count time of our homeless. Um, fifty beds represents a sixth of our point in time of our entire city. So a sixth of our homeless population that was counted.
That's the ratio.
Yeah, um, is housed now, basically, or in the process of getting permit, you know. We're also looking, like, uh, Lisa said, we're looking at, um, some options for families over in my district right now. Um, and, uh, you know, that'll be available hopefully fairly soon. But, uh, you know, I'm I'm, I see this as nothing but a success. And, you know, we transition these people into housing and then we have fifty more beds. And I I get that it doesn't all happen at once, it it's a progression, but it it, we're ma- we're making progress. And I think that's a testament to why, you know, Senator Nguyen was here earlier and she talked about Garden Grove. And we're literally one of the only cities that's reducing our homeless population. You know, the people come and what are you doing, what are you doing? And everyone else is failing, we are succeeding. We are reducing those numbers and we were compassionately helping people into permanent housing. So, you know, I see it as a very positive thing. I get what you're saying, oh, it's full, what do we do, what do we do? There's other options, there was no options prior to this, right? And that's the way you got to look at it. So, um, with that being said, kudos.
Just to play devil's advocate, we do both options. We spent half the time going, wow, we're full, where's everyone else going to go? But the other half going, hey, we're full, that's great. The other thing I'd say about numbers is, and I know we've we've got to go, is it's also about who you house. So if we house five people that have been homeless for ten years or more, that's massive, because they've never been housed anywhere. Compared to, you know, I was homeless yesterday, and I'm not saying one should get more than another, but if you can house and we can work with, and I know the P D are doing that, work with those individuals. Because those are individuals that have been ten, ten years or more, for example, and we have numbers and figures on those, really are the ones that most of your constituents will go, oh, yeah, I know that guy, he was outside my shop, he was outside my house. They're the ones that made the difference for you as a community as well, because they're the ones that have been there longest. They're the hardest ones to work with, but the best, if we can get them in, it's brilliant.
I just wanted to come in just thirty seconds, I know where this is going on. But, um, I think we can all be very proud of what the city has done, the council over the last eight years, the staff that has changed, you know, different people have come in on council and staff, but we kept the train moving. Uh, this is about compassion, tough love, accountability. Like George said, other cities are just sitting on their hands, oh, we're not going to do anything about it. Well, we didn't do that. We we plowed through and it wasn't easy and it's not going to be easy forever. We're not going to solve this problem, you know, but every city should, should be accountable for what's going on in their city. And we took the right road, it wasn't an easy road, but and we got to this point. And we're going to go to another level, like the city manager just said, that we're, now we're looking at the next level. So keep the train moving. Uh, we could all be proud, even the constituents that elected us can be proud of what their city has done to 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 answer the questions of the homeless and unhoused and mentally challenged folks. So, uh, I just thank you very much and, uh, we appreciate it. We'll keep the train going here.
No worries. And one last positive is, from a community point of view, usually wherever we have a navigation center or shelter, whether it's in the middle of a physical community with houses or in more of an industrial state where we are, we usually get issues. And again, I'm touching wood, we've been incredibly good over the last, you know, the first quarter of not having that. I'm going to, see, English people touch it. You guys knock on it, we touch it.
Alrighty, thank you so much for all the updates. Thank you, Kristi. All right, matters, we'll go around the horn real quick, starting with Kim.
Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to highlight that we did have two proclamations on consent that I requested several years ago. We did, um, give, uh, one of the proclamations out, um, for domestic violence and the other one was for pregnancy and infant loss awareness month. So I just want to come, thank my council colleagues for, again, um, voting to pass those proclamations. Um, I also wanted to share that, uh, Council Baby Penylosa was on deck to receive, to help the city receive four million dollars from Senator Umberg last week. Um, I just want to, again, express my biggest thank yous to Senator Umberg, as he only represents a portion of our city, that including my district and where the navigation center is. And four million dollars is a lot and it's going to help significantly with our efforts with the the navigation center. And, um, the fact that he continually outreaches and ensures that his staff is abreast of the things that we're working on and where they can find funding to help us is extremely important to me, um, that relationship, and I hope that it continues on. Um, he does have two more years left, so, you know, for those of you that are remaining on this council, make sure that you, uh, continue to look to him for some funding and assistance. I did want to highlight to the city manager that I have received several complaints from neighborhoods in my district, primarily around Rainbow and Palm regarding neighbors using cones to reserve parking spaces. Um, I know that parking is hard, but it is public. Um, and so some neighbors are getting really upset that folks are using cones to reserve spots. And I don't know if that's parking enforcement or court enforcement, but if we can have folks, uh, look into that. I've also seen this, not have heard complaints yet, but also along, uh, Lampson Street on Jetty Spinnaker, and I can't remember what that third street is, but along that area in front of the, um, elementary school. And also, if we can talk with the school district, I know i- it's crazy in the morning when parents are dropping off their students, but they're parking where they shouldn't, even though it's really quick, it's still not safe. And so if we can have, um, traffic out there to kind of monitor that and just ensure safety for all of our community members as well as our young students. Um, and that is all that I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next Saturday, October fifth, is Casino Night. Uh, this is the second annual fundraiser, uh, for the John Reynolds Youth Support K nine Foundation in collaboration with the Garden Grove Police Department. Uh, the event is from six to ten P M. at the Gem Theater. Tickets are fifty dollars and they are limited to only two hundred tickets. All proceeds will benefit the Support K nine Program, which assists youth in our community. Uh, for those unfamiliar with Garden Grove Police Lieutenant John Reynolds, he was a passionate advocate for our youth. He dedicated his career and life to creating a safe environment in our schools and as well as in our community. Uh, so please join us in honoring his legacy by supporting this Casino Night fundraiser. Um, this year's theme is Roaring Twenties, so dress up in your best nineteen twenties attire and enjoy hors d'oeuvres, raffles, music, blackjack, roulette, and more. Uh, for more information and to purchase tickets, and remember, there's only two hundred, so please hurry up and get your tickets. Uh, you can visit J R Youth Support K nine dot org, that's J R Youth Support K nine dot org. Thank you.
I'm going to use this a minute because I spoke more than I usually do this meeting today and apologize for making it longer than it needs to be. Uh, we are in, um, autumn season and I I think I brought the rain a little early. Um, so if anybody felt like a rain on their party, that's because I want to be practical. Uh, and I think cool heads will prevail. Uh, for the U V S A presentation was well, very well, uh, um, their case was made to our council and and congratulations and welcome back to the U V S A and their debt festival. And I wish them a fresh start and many successes. Uh, that being said, uh, we only have a couple of our meetings before we have a new council. So, um, uh, things may change. Uh, we can't preempt everything, there's no way to predict, I don't have a crystal ball. Uh, but I, uh, I want to wish everybody who's running for election, uh, best of successes. And may the next council carry us forward as the previous councils have. And we're going to have sort of differences and some are going to be more enthusiastic than others on certain items. But at the end of the day, we're all working for the best interests of this community. So, uh, I want to express my appreciation for my, uh, call council members and mayor. Uh, and again, um, congratulations to U V S A and best wishes, the past, bygone be bygone. Let's look forward to a a better future for everyone. Thank you.
Um, I want to highlight two quick things. So first is, um, uh, from the last meeting, I mentioned that we were doing two events. The first event was we want to bring a fun day for disability children, um, to the Moon Festival. And then the other event was, uh, Empowering Future Leader, um, civic engagement in youth. So, um, first I want to say, um, thanks to, um, the Mayor Potempho Santana Tyvit Fan and, uh, Kimberly, um, from Westminster. They both, um, support this event. I just want to, um, let the resident know that, you know, we try to do, um, bring the opportunity and, um, the knowledge to the youth so that way hopefully in the future, um, they will be able to be, you know, one, uh, the leader or, you know, the council member up here and et cetera. So, um, that was the reason why we did that. And we did, um, give Scholar Save five hundred dollar for two student, one is junior high, that's a Martin, and the other one, they call it student, was Alex. Um, at the same token, I just want to say thank to all the nonprofit group that supported event. Kiwanah Club was the one that have, uh, us to you that beautiful part. And everybody were impressed, so the, for residents that do not know, have never been there, you should come. You're going to be impressed and you would love the part. Um, and all the nonprofit group that support, um, the youth group earlier, actually earlier, we have the, um, the the you, the group, uh, Union of, um, Vietnamese Language School. Um, they actually the one that leading this two event. Um, and, uh, other group that support was, uh, V A U S A, um, V NAP, um, David, and, uh, the Vietnamese Federation, um, Southern California Group. So thank you so much to all of you for your support, because without your support, we wouldn't be able to do that. And also thanks to all the sponsors that are helping. Um, uh, so it was a great event and, uh, um, hopefully, uh, the youth group that came, they will, um, see that how our city support them and there will be more, um, opportunity for them to support and get engaged with, um, not just, you know, the youth group outside, but also with the city too. Um, and last but not least, I just want to say happy birthday to my daughter Jasmine and the cousin, Austin, Min, Jason, Emily, and my brother Hyde. That's so funny, they all have the same birthday. So, yeah, that was it. So I have to say all the name, um, that's it.
That's something. Uh, I just had one item, I just wanted to remind everybody to, uh, keep the Santiago Hand Crew Fire Crew that was, uh, in that terrible accident. You know, they had finished a twelve hour shift at the airport fire in Riverside. They're coming home from their twelve hour shift and the the truck rolls over and it's a freak accident. You know, you just like you swerve your car when there you see something on the road and that's what happened. And and, uh, four of them are still in the hospital. And these are, uh, if anybody knows, a hand crew is your youngest portion of your firefighters. They're people trying to become a career firefighter. And they do the hard work, the shovel work and the line work, and they work all day and night. And then for this to happen, a lot of these guys, uh, you know, have young families, uh, wives that have a six month, or, uh, you know, young children, and they're seriously injured. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers, uh, you know, public, uh, public safety. It's a family, just like even city and and public, uh, anything in the public view, or even maybe at your work. You know, there's a family, it's work, but there's actually a family component. But it's even, uh, just stronger in public sector, because as our firefighters, they work tw- forty-eight hours on at a minimum and sometimes three or four days on. And they're with those folks more than they are with their family sometimes. And and even our police, you know, twelve hours on, twelve hours off. So that's a family. And so when something happens like that, it affects the whole agency. But, you know, O C F A, who we partner with and is our part of our family, even though we contract with them, it's still part of the family. And when something like that happens, it's amazing how everybody comes together. And, uh, they're doing as well as possible. There's, like I said, there's four that went home, there was eight injured seriously, uh, two are released that night. Uh, a couple more went home a few days later and there's still four in the hospital. So keep, keep your thoughts and prayers with them. You know, these are young men that were starting their career and we hope that they get rehabilitated and get back to their career, because I'm sure that's what they want to do. So that's all I have, thanks. George.
Yeah, and and piggybacking, not just the officers that were, uh, or the firefighters that were, uh, injured in the accident, but also the ones that were burnt.
Yeah.
And hurt during the actual fighting of the fires.
Yeah, it was amazing. So that. How much work has been done with the airport fire.
Yeah, those guys really proved their worth. Um, so, you know, prayers for all of them. Um, some good news, Strawberry Zest Sculpture, five years in the making. I've been making this, uh, we're our weeks away, weeks away. Uh, supposedly, uh, this week or early next week, we'll be receiving the sculpture all boxed up in a big crate at Public Works. Um, and, uh, they will begin, I think, as maybe towards the end of this week even, starting on the base. So I am hoping by mid-October, we will be ready for the unveiling. So, yeah, this has been a long, as you guys are all aware, uh, a long project. So I'm glad to see it's finally coming to fruition. I am not one to normally talk about events that I went to already in the past, you know, last week or whatever. Um, but, uh, we attended Stephanie Klaufenstein, myself. Uh, we judged Kathy Ladd's Chili Cook Off this weekend, Saturday, another wonderful event. My taste buds have just finally recovered. I can, I I think I have taste back again. Uh, but we made the newspaper today. So we were in the Orange County Register, uh, so somehow they wanted my ugly mug in there. They put Stephanie in there. They put her in there to purty it up a little bit.
She balanced it.
Yeah, balanced my ugly out, right? Um, so anyway, uh, it was a really good event and I hope, you know, Kathy keeps those going. It was a real fun thing over at East Gate Park. So we have, uh, you know, election coming up. Uh, I think we have five more meetings together as a body, right? So, uh, before things change up. Um, there is a couple of candidates forums going on. The Garden Grove Neighborhood Association has a candidates forum here, uh, at the Courtyard Center on September twenty eighth at ten A M. That's kind of an all encompassing forum. So, um, you'll be able to meet the candidates that are running for city councils in the districts that are up for election this year. Uh, you'll, you'll have the mayoral candidates there and I believe the school board candidates are going to be there as well. So, um, you know, if you really want to meet the folks and make an educated decision on who you're going to vote for, I recommend, uh, that you attend. Um, also over in West Garden Grove on October nineteenth, uh, at one P M. at West Grove Park, uh, we will have a mayoral forum over there, because there's no, uh, council seat open over there in in the first district. Uh, but it'll be just the mayoral forum and the candidates, there's seven candidates running for mayor, they've all been invited. Um, everyone but two of them have have responded. Um, and that one will be a little bit different run, because you'll be able to, the audience will be able to actually ask questions of the candidates. Um, whereas this one, I think it's more just hear their vision and that kind of thing. So, uh, so that one is, uh, October nineteenth, one P M. West Grove Park. Um, so we got two good forums there. Attend both, I highly recommend you attend both and, uh, see, uh, and make an educated decision when you vote. Earlier, we had three speakers talking about parking issues, okay? Um, and two of them were actually talking about the same specific area. Uh, I know, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Kim Nguyen Penalosa and myself, years ago, we kind of spearheaded a, a parking unit. And, um, it was a, oh, what do they call those, uh, temporary where they were going to evaluate it, uh, pilot program? It was a pilot program. And, uh, I have not seen the report on how that pilot program did, fared. Um, I know it started out with like six officers, right? Or there was about six of them on there and I I I'd like to get an update on to what's going on with that. Uh, parking continues to be one of the biggest problems I hear. You know, we had three of them today come to our council member, uh, council meeting, talking about the parking issues. Um, you know, for police, it's it's not fair to expect them to go to all these parking things. Um, so I I just would like to get an update and get a report on how that pilot program went. Where where do we currently stand? Do we have one parking person? Do we have two? Do we have six again? I mean, I don't know. So I'd like to, you know, I haven't heard hide nor hair of them, um, probably in two years. So I'd like to know, uh, you know, especially when NOM and all this stuff comes up over in, uh, Stephanie's district over there and, you know, we always get inundated with parking and, you know, citywide, there's always parking problems. So I I I'd like to know what's going on there. Um, so, uh, and then lastly, uh, Councilman Klaufenstein had, uh, had talked about, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, did I say Councilman? Councilwoman Klaufenstein, uh, had talked about the Casino Night, um, but she neglected to say it's actually the the John Reynolds Youth Support Foundation, it's actually supporting the Garden Grove P D K nine program. So that's where all that money, I think, ends up going. Um, so, you know, come out, um, again, that's October fifth, six to ten P M. at the Gem Theater and support our Garden Grove K nine unit. And that's it.
City Manager, Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I will absolutely follow up on those parking items and report back to the council. I just have two events, upcoming events that I wanted to, um, briefly mention. This Thursday, um, our economic development team in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and, um, the Small Business Administration and the Small Business Development Center is hosting a Maximize Holiday Growth, closing out the Year Strong Workshop, where, um, small business entrepreneurs are able to learn strategies about digital marketing, uh, and optimizing your cash flow and enhancing promotions. So this is happening at the C M C, um, this Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from nine to twelve thirty. And then on October fifth, uh, there is a Home Buyer Day twenty twenty-four and it's, um, hosted by Neighbor Works, Orange County, in collaborations with the City of Garden Grove, Santa Ana and Anaheim. And we welcome all of our first time home buyer interest, um, come learn how to, um, more about the Diam payment assistance that the cities offers and learn about the home buying process. And just one final, um, note to sh-
final note to share, on Friday, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to join Councilwoman Kim Nguyen Penalosa, received the Unzung Hero Award by Thomas House, and that was a lot of fun. So thank you.
And also, next Friday, October fourth, is the inaugural Foods of Garden Grove Live event that we're doing. So please plan to attend. You can find more information on our website about that. Omar, General Counsel, any need for closed session, anything to report out?
No, Mayor, we're good to go.
Awesome. With that, we will stand adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. No, I'm good.